Oh, we're off. Welcome to the ZBA. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is taped by FCTV. If there's any private party here recording the hearing, please step forward to the podium and request permission. I'll introduce the board and staff. To my far right is Mark Fineran, a voting member. Next in is Scott Peterson, a voting member. To my closest right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name's Suzanne Murphy, the chair. To my left is James Morse, vice chair. To his left is Tony Petucci, an associate. And then we have Nick Hanny on the end. We have Noreen Stockman, a zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, an office assistant. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town's zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public in to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but the time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. And four, the public will then be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and please speak into the microphone. It will amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. We also have a moment now if anyone wants to make a public statement about anything that's not on our agenda, and we're not going to comment on it, but you're free to have a public comment if you'd like. Is there anyone that wants to make a public comment? And that's all, so we'll move on. We have three continuations tonight, and we're starting off with 17 Walker.
For the record, I am Laura Moynihan from Falmouth, an attorney for the applicant. I think we were last here in October. I did file a letter November 25, just highlighting what I thought were the last few issues from the peer review. One of them was the EV operational space, which we've just said that that was deferred to the building permit process, which we're fine with. I think it is appropriate for the building commissioner to tell us and interpret what code provisions apply. Obviously, whatever he requires, we will have to comply with. Motion sensors in the garage, the applicant has no objection to that recommendation. And then the last item, I think that we didn't quite get a high five on from the Bills and Thomas, was the parking garage aisle widths. But we have, I think, provided you with a wealth of information on why we feel that you can approve it with the 20-foot aisle widths, based on, you know, other standards that are available in the town. Mr. Borselli was also good enough to provide some photos, which I thought you might be interested in, just to sort of show you. Let's see. Of course, I know I can't find it. So, excuse me, I'm sorry about this. I don't seem to see it on there, but I do have a hand copy that I can show you or hand in for the record, just to circulate. This is a parking garage in, you know, I'm sorry about that. This is a, some photos of a parking garage in Boston, in southern Boston, where Mike's family lives. And there, it's showing a small condominium parking garage. You can see just from the nature of the garage, you know, what it looks like. It's a different type of setup than an exterior parking area, and the aisle width there is 14 feet. So, that works in this kind of confined space. Here, we have 20, so we just thought that that was maybe a useful sample for the board to see that they do exist at less than 20. And lastly, I did feel that because of this issue, as I said, I think we've done everything we can on it. But if the board does feel that the provision of the zoning bylaw that applies to exterior parking lots for an aisle width of 24 feet is applicable here, we've argued that it isn't because we don't have two-way travel, we have only one-way travel, and that we do not have standards specific to parking garages. But I did actually update our list of waivers just for a procedural technicality. Again, in the event the board deems that provision applicable, then you'd have on the record the applicant's waiver request.
Great, thanks.
And that's all that I have. I could then answer any questions if you have them. And again, I apologize about that visual, but I had it there on the disk.
Mark, do you have any questions on this project?
Um, no. Well, yes. And it's very small and minor, but the last time, the tower that faces Main Street?
Yes.
I just thought that it was a little bit of land. I still, I mean, it's minor. I mean, I have to say, I think you've done a pretty decent job here, considering the amount of shoehorns you had to use. But, and I mean, it's a minor detail, if you will, but, you know, that's, I think it could be improved a little bit with something there.
So, you're looking for some more architectural detail?
Yeah, I think it's kind of, I think it's going to stand out more than it even shows now, and I just, somebody could get a little creative there, that's all. I mean, it's a minor criticism, honestly.
Yeah.
And I think you've done well with the extra couple of feet, and I thought that was certainly warranted in, you know, the need we have for affordable housing and what's happening downtown anyway, whether we like it or not. But really, at the moment, that's, that's all.
Evan is here, the architect. Do you have any thoughts on, do you want to come to the podium? I mean...
So, for the record, my name is Evan Stellman of Costa Design with a business address of 17 Ivaloo Street in Somerville. We did review this with the peer reviewer Cliff. It was brought up that we could try to add a window there, but that wouldn't be compliant with the building code because it's too close.
No, we understood that before.
We can dress it up a little bit, add some more traditional elements and...
Yeah, a clock.
A clock or something, yeah.
I mean, my eye says that that's going to be more visible than it appears on any of these black, white, gray, whatever colored prints. And I mean, it's a minor criticism, not going to break anything or anybody, but, you know, people are going to be looking at this thing for the next 50 years.
Yeah, definitely.
And, like I said, it's minor. I mean, I probably shouldn't have even mentioned it, but it just caught my eye, and I think it's going to catch everyone else's eye, too.
Yeah, that's understandable.
You know? I'm not the architect, you are. But, like I said, that's it.
Yeah, well, we'll do something for the building permit.
Well, we could agree to a condition that we add a clock on that tower.
Yeah, I mean, just something.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, it does kind of stand out in and of itself, and it is kind of bland. And I mean, you know, it is Main Street, I mean, just off Main Street.
Yeah. It's not, not a problem. I mean, I'd prefer it be more specific if that, if you're, you know, if you're satisfied with a clock, we can agree to a condition that we add a clock on that.
That was just, you know, I mean, it, look at it, and then once the building's built, I mean, I think it's going to be even more obvious that it's kind of bland, and it is the first thing that's going to catch your eye when you're driving down that street every time, or by that street every time.
Okay.
You know, I understand the window doesn't work, but, you know, and whatever, that's it, I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Onward.
Unfortunately, fortunately, almost the exact same. Can you pull up the front elevation from 9/11 and then the front elevation from 10/28? Just so folks, I guess, from out at home can see what materially has changed since we have the architect with you right now.
I'm not sure I brought the old plans.
Not then...
I can certainly bring up the new ones.
Or you could just maybe speak to the changed.
Something's going on here with this. I don't know why there's something going on with the disk.
If you right-click on it and hit open with...
Okay, try that.
Different application.
Okay.
There's an Adobe Reader on here.
No, there is. That's strange. Is there some, is the Adobe gone off of this, or?
Bill Gates' fault.
You didn't renew your subscription.
That, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I have no further questions. I just thought it would be educational for folks at home to see what the changes were, but...
Okay.
Thanks, Frank, I'll defer to you.
Try restarting it.
No questions, Frank? Jim, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Tony?
I, I think it's a slight improvement over what you started with. I don't think it's quite Falmouth, but it's hard to complain. It's a very little lot. It's a difficult lot to design in. It's 40B, this is what you get when you have 40Bs. I agree with Mr. Fineran, I wish that was not such a blank spot, but I think with that frame area that you put in there, it's certainly going to break it up a little bit more. Hopefully, the buildings in front of it will never come down because you don't want to look at that blank wall from Main Street. But I have to say, with the extra two feet creating that bathtub area to hide all the mechanicals, since there's really no place else to put them, really makes a difference. It's unfortunate that the historic district, but I think by boxing out the rakes a little bit, doing some, I'm going to call it crowned around the tower area, I think it made a difference. I really have not much to say about it, and I'm glad you made the changes.
Thank you.
Nick, you all set? Anybody else have a last-minute question before we go to the public? Anybody from the public want to speak on this? Wow, okay.
It's your lucky day.
So, what would you like to do?
I think we should get motion to close in a second.
I have a motion to close in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Motion for approval, conditions?
I'll second that.
There you go, we have a motion approved with conditions. I don't know if we want to dig into this now, the findings and all?
I would suggest we, the administrator, to draft a...
Draft a...
Yeah, because she doesn't have enough work already.
Yeah.
I would ask the chairman if we want to invite the applicant to propose any language that they might want to see incorporated in the decision that we will consider, but...
Yeah.
Be happy to submit a draft if that would help with the workload. We're always happy to do that. It's up to Noreen.
Okay.
As long as you're happy.
Oh, no, we have to, yeah, within 40 days, we then have to approve the decision.
So, we're all set to vote?
Yeah.
Right? Everybody's all set? All those in favor? Whoop, time, time?
When we close the hearing, we would ask the zoning administrator with the applicant if they wish to submit any language to draft a decision, an approval decision with the appropriate conditions.
Then we'll vote then.
And then I would suggest if we want to, if the board members have any specific conditions or findings they want to incorporate in, they can email them.
For us to review.
Right.
Right.
The board then has to vote at some point within 40 days on the decision at that point, Chairman.
Okay, got it.
So, we're proposing to look at a draft on January 9.
All right. That's okay with you?
Yes, thank you. January 9? Thank you, yes.
And our next hearing, Laura, you can stay because I think we have West Falmouth State scheduled next, but I'm still receiving emails. I just got one tonight when I walked in the door. And you're all set with your last one, almost, so I'd like to...
Are we all set for the 9th? And I just wanted...
Yeah.
Motion to continue.
We do need a motion to continue to the 9th on the last hearing.
I'll move to continue 0552417 Walker Street to January 9, 2025, with a vote anticipated that evening of the decision.
I'll second. All those in favor of the continuation? Aye. Sorry about that, guys. Anyway, we'll take another vote quickly. To move, Falmouth Housing Trust up next so that Laura can head out. If that's okay with everybody up here?
Yes. Works for me.
All those in favor of moving to do the Housing Trust? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none. So, we're going to move to 419 Wacoit, if that's okay with you, Laura?
I hope this drive works.
Could be a bad night up there, right?
I don't know, I restarted the computer.
Oh, did you?
It looks like the PDFs aren't coming up.
You tried rebooting it?
I did, yeah.
Adobe's temper metal.
Yeah.
Doesn't feel like it, but it started to snow.
Just checking, there's, there are some PDFs on here.
That one's gone.
Okay, so now it's working. Somebody else? Okay. So, for the record, I am Laura Moynihan. I am the executive director and in-house counsel for the Falmouth Housing Trust. This project is at 419 Wacoit Highway. Just going to spend a few minutes. We've submitted a lot of information in writing. We're very thankful for the work that the engineering department, Scott Schulter, has done to assist on this project. Tim Santos is here from Merrill Engineering. So, the last few issues, I think there was an item in the last update from, from engineering about adding catch basins on both sides of the roadway. That was addressed. Scott did confirm that today by email that that was overlooked in his last letter, so we've taken care of that. The monuments, we, the applicant can agree to a condition to install concrete bounds at all lot corners as recommended, with a spike insulation for the lot corner in the shared driveway for 3 and 4 as recommended by engineering. Those would be shown on the definitive plan and, which would be submitted to you for signature if you approve the permit. We would like to stay with the rod caps for the easement corners to be defined. We feel that they can be satisfactorily defined this way through the recorded survey plans. These are, again, drainage and utility areas, so they're not really areas that the homeowners need to be concerned about. They're more for the utility companies and the town. And we just feel that it's a lot of concrete bounds out there on the parcel and that the rod caps would be more suitable for the defining the easement areas. So, those are now as shown on the definitive plan. Item 44 was recommended by engineering that Cape Cod berms extend across the driveway openings to protect the road surface on lots 3 and 4, and the applicant can agree to that condition as recommended. The applicant acknowledges, as suggested, that plowing on the shared driveway would not be a town obligation, no problem. The road curb cut at Wacoit Highway, Mass DOT has moved this to the 75% approval stage, which, which is good. If you're not familiar with the state process, you submit your design plans, they give you what they call a 25% approval, preliminary approval, and then they tell you that they're moving it to the, what they call the 75 slash 100% approval process. So, we're expecting that will take place by the end of December, but they haven't identified any issues thus far. So, that approval is subject to the state jurisdiction. The town engineering department and the town's street opening permits and their regulations only apply if it's a town right-of-way, which it is not. So, we feel that we have to follow the Mass DOT standards and requirements and that the town standards are not applicable. The site distances do meet the ASHTO standards for safe site distance and will be almost 400 feet in each direction, and they do meet the state standards, which has been confirmed. So, the board could condition any comprehensive permit, of course, subject to Mass DOT issuance of a curb cut approval permit, which obviously we would need in order to secure a building The planning board referral, I just wanted to address quickly. The main point was that the planning board had suggested that three houses that face Wacoit Highway could be turned to face the proposed road. In the design process for the project, we did look at various options for the design. We did look at that one as well as a cul-de-sac option. The issue is that the lot actually narrows as it goes deeper into the parcel, and I don't think the planning board was considering in that recommendation that we have a 44-foot wide road layout, and then we would have, to meet town standards, a 25-foot setback off the road. So, we're now into a situation where we don't have enough lot depth for those three homes to be turned that way. So, that's the process that we went through with Tim and his office in the, in the design, trying to look at various options for the homes. And as it turned out, the design that was chosen was to continue that village setting and continue the homes along Wacoit Highway to complement the mixed commercial and residential use area. So, I did discuss the issue that the planning board raised about the potential traffic noise with the contractor and can offer a few things. So, these homes will be set back 35 feet from the state road layout. If you look at the plans, you'll see that the pavement is actually almost another 20 feet in. So, you're really looking at 50 to 55 feet of setback from the actual pavement and, and the vehicle use. The houses will be built under the new energy code, and the comment that the contractor said was that you wouldn't hear a gunshot in that house because you have 200 windows, you have, they're double pane, argon gas-filled, you have R30 closed cell insulation at four and a half inches, and you have thermature solid exterior doors. So, we, we appreciate the comments of the planning board, and I just wanted to let you know that we didn't ignore them. We did look at various design options, and Tim can comment more on that if you want more information, and ended up with this one for all of those reasons. The Board of Health and the septic systems, the Board of Health did approve the advanced treatment nitro systems on Monday night, individual systems for each lot. Those systems, because they're advanced treatment, they require Board of Health approval. That is a voluntary upgrade from the applicant in connection with the 300 Committee as part of this project, as I explained the last time, that we, we offered it in a, you know, in an effort to not only preserve open space on this parcel, but also water resource protection. The health agent did update his referral to you to confirm that the individual systems would require the approval of the Board of Health. There is no bylaw or regulation requiring a shared system here. The coastal pond overlay district and the subdivision regulations speak to certain nitrogen loading standards and environmental impact reports if you have more than five lots. So, those are really the only provisions in the zoning bylaw or the subdivision regulations that can sort of govern advanced treatment in, in a sense, but they don't apply here because we are not more than five lots. We are five lots. So, I think that, that we, we and the health agent and the health department are all, or Board of Health are all on the same page, that there is no requirement for this advanced treatment or for a shared system. Mr. Fineran had asked about the cost of the shared system, so I did go back and look at that again. So, the issue with the shared system is that if you propose a shared system, then the health regulations require you to treat at 12 milligrams per liter or less. That's where the added expense comes in, and so it's, it's quite a bit more expensive. We've priced it out both ways here, and it is more expensive to do a shared system and treat to that level. There's also the issue of needing to have a generator, power source, a pump, so that there's a common infrastructure that's required for the shared system. And that means collection of dues, HOA, self, a self-governing situation for these five homeowners. We feel very strongly that the individual systems are the better way to go because each homeowner is responsible for their own system. There wouldn't be any common assessments needed, which, again, when you're dealing with 100% affordable project, you have, you don't have market rate units that subsidize the affordable HOA fees. So, we try, we always try to do our projects without HOA fees. They also go to buyer eligibility issues and qualifying for mortgages because the HOA fee gets tagged on to the, to the buyer approval process. So, explained all that to the Board of Health on Monday night, and they agreed... So explained all that to the Board of Health on Monday night, and they agreed that the individual systems were okay, and they approved them. So those are all my comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Scott done that in?
My comment and question on the cost was actually kind of just sticking my foot in the political door because unfortunately, we're not at the time and place yet, but a shared Title V system and urine diversion would kill two birds with one stone and save you enough money to build other house easy. What, just out of curiosity, what is the cost of that overpriced system?
Of a shared system?
No, of the individual IAs that you're putting in.
Well, they're priced out at, you know, around forty each, forty to forty-five, something like that.
Fifty.
It's difficult because we have, obviously, when we do our pricing, we have in-kind donations. We also have, you know, by purchasing and having all five installed at once, there are discounts that are applied. So, but that's about where we're at now for each system. So.
Yeah. In the future, maybe.
Well, I mean.
It's, I'm sorry, I don't want to get.
No, that's okay.
Far afield, but I think it's an absolute no-brainer, and spending all this extra money.
Well.
Unnecessary in my mind, and I know I'll be proven right. I think it's already been proven, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think the Falmouth Housing Trust feels pretty strongly that if we're going to be building five affordable homes there, we don't want our homeowners to be in a situation where they're required to upgrade.
Yeah.
Yeah, in three, four, or five years, whatever that is. And the nitro system does treat to twelve slash eleven milligrams per liter. It's the best system that's received approval, which is the other factor that I explained. You know, urine diversion and other pilot-type projects, we can't get those approved. You know, we have to propose something, so.
No, it'd be an ideal test project, though.
Possibly, but, you know, without getting, like you say, too much into the weeds, you know, there are costs associated with urine diversion as well, and so leave it at that for now, but certainly we can't propose that because it's not approved technology. But anyway, we did feel that this was the right thing to do for this area of Wacoit. With the financial support through a donation from the 300 Committee, we're able to propose it, and so that's why we're proposing it.
But anyway.
Scott?
I just think the way that you ran the project and kind of ticked all the boxes, you did a great job at assessing all the hurdles and did, you know, just a really robust assessment, and I think it's a good project, and thank you for stepping up and do the nitrogen additional. That's great.
Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
I appreciate your agreement to put concrete monuments at lot corners. Because of the size of this lot and the fact that you have a lot of lot lines that are very close together, I can see a lot of problems in the future if these lot lines were not actually demarcated by bounds because there's not much room for error here. I would like, one lot line, however, has kind of puzzled me, and I'd like perhaps you to give me an explanation. The lot line between the paved, the both paved roadway and Lot Five seems to run right through the parking space for Lot Five, and also it looks like it's running right through the yard. Why is it there? Why didn't you make it the same or coexistent with the paved driveway?
In this area here?
Oh, you've got a lot line running right through the parking space and running right through the front yard.
And?
I'm just wondering why you chose to do it.
As opposed to something different?
By putting it at the edge of the.
Oh, of the driveway?
The roadway.
Oh. Well, it may have been just to put more lot area in lots two, three, and four.
But that's not lot, that doesn't help Lot Two, Three, and Four at all.
That's true. Do you want to comment on that, Tim?
I'll show you.
It's right in here.
See this piece on the south of the driveway? Why not just run the lot line across the driveway so that that area is incorporated into Lot Five?
For the record, Tim Santos from Merrill Engineers. I believe what we were trying to do was equalize all the lots area-wise, so if we kind of slid that lot line up on Lot Five, I believe that's what you're saying, move it up to the north, then we're reducing the lot size on Lot Two and Three.
But does it make any difference? I don't think the people on Lots Two or Three care.
It really doesn't, but.
From a practical point of view.
From a practical point of view, but what we were trying to do was just equal the lot areas.
I mean, we can certainly move that.
I would ask you to think about it because I think it's going to be very annoying for somebody to have a lot line running through their yard.
Yeah, I don't, that's not a big deal.
We can move.
The driveway too.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good point, Mr. Duffy. I think that was probably more, like, sometimes you get so caught up in the requirements that you don't see the forest through the trees, you know, and, I mean, I agree. So we can move that lot line up to adjacent to the driveway, so that would allow for more lot area on Lot Five and a little bit of less lot area on Lots Two and Three.
Yeah, the fact that you don't have perfect equality, I don't think will bother anybody.
Okay.
But that would make Lot Five about ninety-five hundred square feet, and that would be by far the largest lot.
Yes.
There'd be no equity there, and they're in the back.
Lots Two and Three got plenty of backyard space, so.
Yeah, I don't think it will make a difference to Two and Three to be on the other side of the driveway. So we can make that change.
While we're on Lot Five, I noticed that you don't have a walkway going from the parking space to the, to the house. You're going to have to just walk across your yard, or, because you have a walkway to all the other houses.
True. Well, we have one in on Three and Four, so we did not put one in, we did not put them in on One, Two, and Five.
Yeah, you've got them on, the proposed gravel walkway on all the other lots.
Yeah.
Yeah. You do. Okay, well, I can show you something that's that, so hopefully my disc will work. So this is, this is what we could do. You know, obviously, these are cost issues, but, you know, this came up at the last meeting as well. You know, we're trying to preserve the backyard space of some of these, but this would be a short path to the back of Five. This would be another one into Lot Two, and then this would be the front yard walk into Lot Five. So, you know, if the board does want to see those connections with.
Talking about.
You have it there, but you don't have it.
At the back, not Lot Two.
Okay. Well, this is just a suggestion. I mean, it's.
I'm looking at this.
But you have it on here on Lot Five, and you don't have it on this print?
No, because this is just a sketch that we did up for sort of discussion purposes. I haven't filed this, you know, when we were looking at.
So your intention is to put that proposed lot there?
If the board feels that these path additions should be added, this is what we could propose, is what we're saying.
Well, in the case of, what is that, it's Lot?
This is Lot One.
Lot One.
Yeah.
Now, you've got a pathway to the front door.
Yes.
It seems kind of strange because it doesn't really connect with anything except the road. There's no parking there.
Right.
But then you've got one shown on that plan to the back door.
Yes.
Which probably makes more sense.
Yes.
But on the plan I'm looking at, on Lot Five, there's absolutely no walkway anywhere.
Right. So this is what we could do if you felt that that was necessary?
I tend to think it is.
Okay.
See how you can give everybody else one and not give them one.
Okay. And what about these two in here, then? Are those, you think that if you don't feel those are necessary, then we would leave those off, and we would just show the path here on Lot Five?
That one's kind of necessary in two because they're going to be parking in.
Here, yeah.
That's the way they're going in.
I mean, these are not, you know, these are not big areas.
They're for looking, it's never going to get used.
Yeah.
I think it's useless. The market's right on point there. So One, Two, and Five.
Okay.
The people on the other lots, Three and Four, have a long walk.
Yeah. Well, it's about forty. I think I've heard that at about forty feet.
All right.
All right, well, I'll file this for the record. Okay, great, thanks. I'll let you do it. You know, obviously, this project is a hundred percent affordable. We're fighting the clock on construction costs. You know, we have a fundraising need of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. So, well, you know, we don't need to get into costs and things and just, I'm always trying to anticipate what the board might want because timing is critical for us. Costs are going up every month. Every time, you know, I talk to the contractor, we have building code changes. We have, you know, now we have the plants closing, and the bids that we have for pavement are going to be going up ten percent in the spring. So that's why we took the liberty of doing this, just in the event it was something that you were, felt strongly about. It's there on the record.
I would just take your walkway money from the highway and move it down to Lot Five.
Well.
Take those ones that are, you know, that are on the highway. You don't, I think they're not going to be used much.
I think the money they'll save on trick-or-treaters.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, maybe what we can, what we can do, you know, sometimes with these projects, is once you get into the construction phase, you can see where the buildings are sited better, you can see what works better, and it might be something that we might come back to for an administrative modification, just to say, okay, this doesn't really work, that works better. But for the purposes of, like I say, moving forward and securing a permit, you know, time is critical for these kinds of projects. So that may be where we end up when the houses are in, foundations are in, if you're inclined to grant the permit. We would just look at the pass structure again and come back. But the idea with the pass off of Wacoit Highway was really to try and create that pedestrian amenity for people to be able to, you know, come out of the front of the houses and, so, create more of that village look, design element.
Are you all set, Frank?
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Have you met with the post office? Is this going to be individual mail?
No, we did show on the revised plan the common mailbox.
Yeah.
So it'll, it will be a common mailbox. I did call the post office and talk more with them about it, and that's what they're going to want. So, let's see.
I think it's up by Lot One, if I remember.
Yeah.
Wasn't it?
So up in here, in this location.
Oh, that side, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And is that where Amazon and all the packages are going to go also, or are they going to go to the house? Is that enclosed, or it's just one of those stand-up?
It's a stand-up.
So the.
For mail only.
Packages will have to go to the porches?
I imagine unless, do you, they go to the porches, yeah.
Amazon can't use mail postal on delivery.
Yeah, right.
And how are you handling EV if any of that comes up? Just per case?
The homes will be, why, you can, my understanding is, is that the homes will have the electrical capacity for EV and for solar, but that we would not be installing that. But if the homeowners in the future wanted to, you know, take advantage of whatever grants are out there or doing that, that the infrastructure would be in place.
Okay, great, thanks.
Jim?
Questions of the previously addressed, thank you.
Tony?
I thank you very much for the IA systems. I mean, this is something this town is going to, is going to have to go to, the state of Massachusetts is going to require it, and I know we have plans to move forward on it, but thank you. One of the things that I'm concerned about is, and I think you may have covered this earlier on, is that those first, I don't know, what is it, four years of IA systems, the testing that's done.
Yes.
Aren't you putting money aside for the testing? This is affordable housing.
Yes, so we would be setting up an escrow account that the Housing Trust would administer. Our hope is that we can negotiate a contract for all five homes to have the testing all done at once, and we would cover that, those initial two years or until the quarterly testing, it's either two years or three years, three years, then we can apply to have that testing reduced under the Board of Health regulations to once a year, I believe, at that point. So that's, that is the plan. You know, we incorporated that into the cost factor.
And there's about, it's about roughly six hundred dollars a year annual operating and maintenance?
I, roughly. I mean, we haven't received quotes yet. Like I said, our hope is to, you know, negotiate that with the inspection company to try and get it down, but.
A wish.
Ish, yeah.
Well, I think it's good. I mean, the point is, you're going to do that, you've got to take care of it. They are a little expensive to maintain, and I think it's a wonderful thing you're doing with that. My concern is always pride of place with affordable housing that we, and I think you've done a nice job designing the layout. I think you've done a nice job designing the houses. Some of the things that I worry about is when I see, this is going to be a homeowners association, is that what's going to happen?
Well, there'll be, there will be a set of covenants, of covenants, easements, and restrictions that will be recorded against the title to each lot. We don't normally require a homeowners' association for something this small, mainly because if there isn't any common infrastructure, such as with a shared septic system, there really isn't any need for dues collection to administer that. And also with these small developments, you know, you're dealing with people who are working, raising their children, there's not a lot of time there to be self-governing, running a homeowner, a formal homeowners' association. So we try to set up the developments to not have a formal HOA in place where people are voting and meeting and that kind of thing. But there will be a set of covenants, and in the past with, with, I think it was the last project on Lewis Neck Road, there was a, we would submit those to the board, you know, as a condition of the approval, that the board would see those and that they would be in place before the lots are conveyed out.
So there's no, if you end up moving this lot line out to the common driveway, the only common area would be that driveway?
It would be, it would be a driveway that would be a shared between the three lots, yeah.
Yeah. So that would be the only common area.
Yeah.
And so because there are no homeowners' association dues, and I see a lot of wood chips and gravel, I don't have a problem with that. Those things wear out very, very quickly, and when there's no common area that's being maintained, you know, what does this look like in five years from now? Because again, pride of place is, to me, speaking as one member, is very important to see that. And the type of materials being used, and I understand why, I'm not complaining about that part of it. Gravel dissipates quickly, wood chips definitely go away in three years. Who's going to take care of that and maintain this?
Well, typically, we impose the obligation on the homeowners that are using the, so in this, in that example, the shared driveway for Two, Three, and Four, we would impose a shared maintenance responsibility on those three lot owners. I mean, we can certainly set up an HOA, you know, in the. I mean, we can certainly set up an HOA, you know, in the covenants. It's easy enough to do. And we can provide for what I would say a nominal annual assessment of $100 or something like that so that there's a kind of a kitty being collected. But what I'm saying is what we try to get away from is a formal HOA like you see with a condominium where there's, you know, monthly dues being paid. You have to have somebody governing that, collecting that. So we try to design the developments to stay away from those common expenses. But we can certainly here, you know, set that up in the covenants for a small HOA.
I'm not trying to make this more difficult.
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
I just know what happens to property when it's set up this way in five years in that when we all drive by this five years from now, we want to have that same pride that we feel right now that you've created, the Housing Trust has created by doing a project like this. That's all. I don't have the legal mind necessary to tell, even suggest to you how you might do this. That I have to leave up to you and hope that it works out well. But something like this will deteriorate very quickly if it's not maintained appropriately. So I thank you very much for putting this together, and those are all my comments.
Yeah. Well, we, you know, while the Housing Trust believes in the pride of homeownership and homeowners taking care of their own properties, and we work to set them up for success for that, we, of course, are always here, and we're always, you know, keeping an eye on our developments. We're often monitor, are the monitoring agent for developments. So, but I think, I mean, we just haven't really gotten that far along in the legal process yet. But I think from what you're saying that that should be something that we could easily propose, is a simple HOA with an annual fee to be paid that isn't going to adversely impact the buyer's ability to secure a mortgage so that there's some collection of a fund as time goes on.
I'll leave that up to you. Thank you for considering that.
Thank you. Because I'm thinking out loud here.
Nick, do you have any questions?
I don't. Great project. Looks nice.
I appreciate you putting the sheds on the plan, too. Thank you.
It's like Trish Favouli with the bike rack, you know? She always wanted her bike rack, you know, for years, and now you want the sheds, so...
So I do have a question. So if you have the houses EV ready or if somebody wanted to have a vehicle that they were going to plug in, would they not need to bring the vehicle closer to the dwelling to actually be able to plug it in, to charge it?
Well, we're not going to have, we won't have the houses EV ready.
No, but I mean, if there's an option for a homeowner to have an EV...
They could just dig up conduit.
To charge it.
The driveway.
They would bring it from the house, so...
Because I was just thinking, would it make sense to have pervious pavers or something so that if somebody had young children, you're trying to carry kids, groceries, stroller from a car and it's snowing or raining to a house? People tend to want to park as close as possible if you have heavy items. I just didn't know if it made sense potentially to consider that.
Well, we did in a lot of different ways, you know. We're dealing with a housing crisis. People are desperate to be able to buy homes at, you know, $250,000 to $350,000. So something gives a bit in that, and, you know, we sort of looked at this in the design, that it's almost more like a condominium complex where, you know, you do walk from your car to your entryway, and that's what you do, you know? So, but again, by changing the design around, we're also giving up backyard space, which we felt was very important, so...
Any further follow-up up here before we go to the public? Good, Noreen, you all set? Everybody's good? Anybody from the public want to comment on this project? Great.
You're on a roll.
We are on a roll. Do we have a date for this, Noreen?
January 23rd.
Anybody want to give me a motion?
Motion to close.
Nope.
No.
Motion to come, sorry. Motion to continue until January 23rd, right? 23rd? Sorry.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, it was on.
Any further discussion? You're all set?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Great. Thank you.
Is it possible for the board to consider voting to request a positive decision for the 23rd? I mean, we're just, you know, that's a month and more away, and then we're probably a month after that. So again, we really are dealing with trying to get these homes built and construction costs and...
We're dealing with 140Bs on this side.
I know, I know. But at least if you...
Let's check with the boss.
Well, so we have a scheduling, potential scheduling snafu. And so it may not be possible because it may wind up that we would have two 40Bs on the same night. Right. So I think we have to defer a draft at this time. I mean, if we have extra time, we could start on it. But I can't commit to this because of the rest of the scheduling right now.
Do we want to ask for a draft?
Yeah. I mean, the date isn't as important as the consensus of the board because we can do a lot of work between now and that date, and we can commit funds to things if we feel that the board, you know, there's a consensus to vote a positive project, is what I'm saying. We have to demolish the building, you know, we can move to construction plans. We're trying to get a March 1 construction start date. So, you know, putting it to January 23rd and then having a motion and then having a draft decision, you're now looking at February, and then you have an appeal period. So we're looking at two, three months out, so...
But we also have three 40Bs anyway that are all on a similar timescale. And I think it's unfair to the board to expect you to review two comprehensive permits on one night. I think that's an overload. So I think at this point in time, given the schedules of these cases and other cases you have pending, you could wind up committing yourself to more than we can fulfill in one night.
Zorani.
And as I said...
Getting halfway.
As I said, I'm not as concerned about the date as perhaps a vote to ask the administrator to draft a positive decision. If that can't happen on the 23rd because the board is too, has too heavy of a workload and it gets bumped out a little bit, I understand that. But waiting from December 5th to January 23rd to find out if the board is inclined by consensus to vote for a positive draft to be written means we're now putting it a month out into February and then another month into March.
Didn't notice too many negatives.
My suggestion through you, Madam Chairman, is why don't we just have a little discussion about where everyone is on this project?
I think that's...
Yeah.
I think we kind of, and Laura has a sense of it as well.
Great project is my vote.
I didn't notice any negatives anyway, so I don't see how it's not proceeding as she hopes. And in lieu of the costs, I think it's a reasonable request, at least to meet her some kind of halfway.
Jim?
No, I'm inclined to approve with conditions. I'm not seeing any red flags. I think there's a lot of, it's checking off a lot of boxes, as I think the board has indicated. I don't want to overwhelm Noreen, and there's other applicants we need to be fair of, but if you're just looking for...
Yeah, you have also several regular cases that are ongoing, as well as other 40Bs.
Those are the people.
And so, yeah, making a commitment to being able to do a draft for this case that night as well as potentially another one is just not possible. So I'm just being honest.
I think Noreen's right.
Yeah.
An awful lot on the table. I mean, I think we all have expressed that we really appreciate this project.
Yeah.
And that it will most likely keep moving forward.
If the applicant wants to submit a draft that can get the ball rolling?
I'd be happy to submit a draft, absolutely. If I can submit a draft next week for consideration on the 23rd or whenever the board is next available to review it. What I'm saying is you're, we're at December 5th, and that schedule is now putting us probably into February to have something filed and into March. I mean, that's three months away, you know? And I understand how busy the board is. I really do. And I know that you put a lot of time in. But all I'm asking is that if you were to vote for a draft positive decision, table it to the 23rd. If you're not able to get to it on the 23rd, then put it off another week or two. But at least we're closing that gap from now until January 23rd with nothing, right? That's like, how many weeks is that? That's six, seven weeks from now with nothing.
We have a few holidays, too. You know, here's the thing. If we had the capacity, I would do all of them tonight and have them ready for you tomorrow. I don't have that capacity. You know, we're not delaying anything here. This project is, you know, certainly moving fine as far as time-wise goes. We're not up against 180 days. There's no issue here. You know, we're certainly making every effort we can.
Well, respectfully, you know, when you're dealing with 100% affordable housing project and we have still a significant need in the community, it is appropriate to prioritize projects, you know? It's different. At least if the applicant is willing to submit a draft to assist the staff who are so busy, why isn't that being accepted? I mean, it was for years. I've submitted many drafts.
We may have another case that we would have to vote the same night.
Well, then you bump us, Noreen. Like I said, I have no objection to that. But at least we're closing that gap between now and January 23rd. At least we know there's some vote out there to draft a positive motion. The applicant can consent that if on the 23rd you do not have the capacity to review the draft, then put it out to another meeting. That's fine. But at least we're closing that gap between now and six, seven, eight weeks from now where we have nothing.
I mean, we do have till April 15 legally, and I understand what Attorney Moore is going to say. But we've got a lot in front of us and a lot to consider. People think that we just sit around, you know, doing nothing, I think. But it takes a lot of work to be prepared every night, every week.
I certainly don't feel that way. But I also think that the applicants are willing to work with you as well if you let them. If I get a phone call that says the board does not have the capacity to review this draft tonight, I'm not going to say anything other than, okay, give me the next date. So we're willing to work with you as well to assist the process, you know? But we're not being given that opportunity. That's all I'm asking for.
Looking to overwhelm Noreen, but if we ask that one start to be drafted, if Noreen can't get to it, she can't get to it, it's like, I think that's more than realistic and fair.
Continue to the 23rd, but if we're not ready, we're just going to have to move it.
We may well, in fact, ask for that help on the 23rd. So having it beforehand might not gain her a day, but...
Yeah. Well, at least we know, at least we know it's in the works rather than waiting six, seven weeks to find that out. That's my point.
But you could end up with conditions that maybe you don't agree with.
We can amend them.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as that happens.
She can submit language.
We should have to vote on every single condition, one-on-one.
I just don't want the project to get caught up in something that slows it down even further.
We don't have to agree to anything.
No, it wouldn't, yeah. No.
Might help the mechanics of it, I think.
It's just the mechanics of it. That's a good word, right?
If we continue to the 23rd of January, we would grant Attorney Moore the permission to submit a proposed decision with the understanding that if on the 23rd of January we are not ready to vote on it, we have the right to continue it to another date within the 180 days.
Want to second that one, Scott? That's sounding good.
I believe I can second that, yes.
Does that sound good to everybody? Noreen, are you okay with that?
Okay.
Boy, am I in trouble.
Call the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Thank you.
Noreen doesn't get to...
Tony, you said about us having a lot on our plate. I'll have you know that I left a steak and potatoes and mixed vegetables on my plate at home. Two bites out of it.
I feel badly.
Yeah, you're crying two tears out of one eye for me.
We do thank you, and we do appreciate everything you do, and I certainly understand the workload. So we're more than willing to work with you. Thank you.
We were excited to have Thanksgiving lot last Thursday.
I know, I know.
And Halloween, too.
I'm so bad at it. And we had Halloween.
And Fourth of July. It's a sum total of our vacations this year.
Well, I'll tell, I mean, this might help. We're just recently closing on a home for a workforce family.
Good.
That family of four that have been living in an 800-square-foot apartment for eight, seven, eight years. And we're pretty much ready to have to leave the community. So, you know, that's who we're serving, and that's why there is a rush because people are leaving because the opportunities are not there, and we don't want to lose them. And the longer time goes on, the more we're going to lose. So thank you for understanding that.
We're trying to do the best we can. We really are.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, too. All right, moving on. West Falmouth Estates.
Yeah, hi, my name is Robert Pena.
One second, please.
I'm sorry?
One second, please.
It says to read it in? Okay. Here's a letter to read in that was requested to read in.
We received a letter from Phyllis Littleford, who's a lady who was in a butter to this project. She's been here before and has spoken in person, but she submitted a letter today, 4 o'clock, asked it to be read, so I'm going to read it. It's not too long, so bear with me. To whom it may concern, please see the April 25, 2024 document which was submitted by the developer. The proposed curve to the entrance is still the same. I am requesting it be moved 10 to 30 feet to the north. It still potentially limits access to 15 North Falmouth Highway. Request Mass. DOP, that's DOT, Department of Transportation, opinion only. Section 305-24B (S), those are the subdivision regulations. The proposed water drainage lot would pose a problem as it could be a breeding ground for mosquitoes. It is too close to a butter's boundary. The landscape plan does not satisfy me because I need exact placement and number of feet into the developer's property. I am concerned with fences touching my property boundary because this would not be acceptable. I need an answer from the landscaper regarding placement of trees, shrubs, as in a butter. Article 7, overlay district. No comment. Section 247.8, wildlife corridor of the zoning bylaw. Do not wave. Wildlife need to keep their habitat. I have huge wild turkeys walking through my property, coyotes running up to the front of my house and using my driveway closest to 19 North Falmouth Highway, and deer feeding on my rose bushes. Do not waive any local filing fees, building permits, water sewer fees, or reviewer or inspection fees. Please read these statements during the Thursday, December 5, 2024 meeting. Thank you, Phyllis Littleford, and that's the end of the letter.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, I know tonight the peer engineer is here, and so there's a couple of other people here on my behalf, the development's behalf, Vicky Mitchell from Peter Daigle Law firm is here, and Ed Montero, who, you know, we speak closely on anything to do with the septic systems and other things we've got in the development, so he's here speaking as well. So I'm going to just turn it right over to, I guess, whoever you guys want first. I would imagine you want the peer engineer?
I would like to do the peer first, yeah, if that's okay. That's okay with everybody up here?
Yeah.
Good evening, Matt.
Good evening. For record, Matt Cody with Bill's and Thomas. So our most recent letter was issued to the board on November 20. Prior to that, we had the opportunity, so previously, I guess, let me take a step back. We had issued a letter on September 24. we had issued a letter on September 24th that included our initial comments. Subsequent to that, we had the opportunity to meet with the applicant on October 31st to go through some of the outstanding issues and work, you know, work through where we're at, and then we issued our letter most recently on November 20th. As you're aware, I mean, the, the project is requesting several waivers, you know, dimensional, all kinds of waivers for the density and setbacks, et cetera. The only one that I guess kind of remains somewhat concerning is the road layout and the width. It's not that the width is problematic, it's just that they're leaving themselves with really no construction tolerance of any kind, so it's just gonna have to be built pretty closely or, you know, the lot lines and stuff they're proposing aren't gonna be accurate.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question, Madam?
Yeah, go for it.
What do you mean? Could you explain that a little bit more detail?
So, so typically, you know, like your roadway width, let's say, it's 20 feet, but the right of way would actually be 30 feet. So if the road beandered kind of in that, you know, the 20-foot road beandered in that 30-foot road, you know, give or take, you know, no one's gonna, if you're, you know, limiting, you have a 21-foot right of way and a 20-foot road, you don't have a lot of construction tolerance through there to get everything just, just the way you want it. Like on paper, it works, but in reality, you know, is it gonna be that like dialed in?
Thank you.
Relative to the earth removal, the applicant was able to clarify what they were expecting there. It's gonna be a lot of trips of material out of there, just, you know, it was a two-week period, just wanted to make the board aware of that.
That's the 700 figure that, what, what number are you on?
That was 19 in the most recent letter. So it would've been 700 truck trips over a two-week span, give or take.
Would you say that?
That's in and out of the 700. That's not just in. Is that correct?
Right. Trips, like round trips.
Round trips, yeah. So that's one in, one out, so that's really 1400.
Correct. I mean, I get, I mean, that's rough, Matt, I mean, it's.
Twelve and a half an hour.
Just thinking, does town engineering monitor the condition of the road, 28, I mean, the entrance potential damages or whatever, and would we condition responsibility if such damages did occur? Is that normal or unusual? I'm relatively new here.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess the number, I mean, I don't have a lot of experience with that number of trips.
Seems like a lot.
It's a lot.
And you know it's a lot because of the topography there is difficult.
Right.
They're gonna have to do a lot of work.
Yeah, it's a lot. Yeah, I would, I would, it seems reasonable to me to, you know, recommend some kind of, you know, before and after, like if the road's all destroyed, then there should be some onus on the applicant to repair it, for sure.
Okay, just.
That would seem reasonable.
That's just a, a huge number of trips. I mean, it's really 1400.
Yeah, correct.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Tony.
So if this is a 10, just, just so it's on the record, so if I'm gonna use trailers, but I mean, a 10-wheeler, let's say, a full 10-wheeler is gonna be about 20 tons plus the, the truck itself. That doing that, under trucks per day, will most likely result in damage to the road. So by, just so this is on the record, so that maybe it has to be conditioned that there are some funds put up for road repair.
Okay, all right. It's 100 trips a day.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
That's why, why we figured it was worth noting.
Yeah, it was.
We had a, we had a comment relative to the environmental impacts statement at the time of the letter, it was not provided, it subs, it came in after the fact. It seemed, that gets into the issues of the nitrogen systems and all those things.
Environmental impact?
Yes. We understand that, you know, the, it appears that the applicant is willing to, you know, retrofit the system or again, leave room for these systems if in fact they're needed at some point. The density of the project is, kind of where we started with the waivers, there's small lots, there's not a lot of room to maneuver around. The retrofitting of these systems seems like it might be something difficult to do after the fact, you know, once the houses are built. You only have limited side yards for access, et cetera. There's retaining walls between several of the lots, so I mean, it's gonna be, I guess I can't necessarily speak to the means and methods of a contractor of how they would propose they would do that, but it would be, but it will be tight, no doubt.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead, Tony.
So, these are 12, on the next purpose, these tanks are generally 12,000 pounds. If it's a 1,500 gallon tank, am I correct?
That sounds, that, that's reasonable.
Wall width. That generally means that the vehicle that's being used to bring it in is gonna be a truck, it's gonna have a little crane on it, and I mean, that's generally the way these are brought in, not necessarily on a, using an excavator to do it.
Right.
These trucks tend to be roughly 10 feet wide. We have 7.75, 7.73 widths after the walls. I just want to, again, get this on the record, this is not something a skid steer is gonna pick up or a midsize excavator to get through there.
I, I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm not a contractor as far as like the actual, like how they would go about doing that, but, but like I would, I, it's not typical to see a skid steer moving those kinds of.
How does that weigh?
No.
Okay.
At least in my, in my experience.
Do you have any question on that?
I, I was just, and I, numbers sometimes stick in my head, but what's the total lot coverage of impervious surface here? Extremely high, isn't it? Like 70% was it?
70%.
70%.
I believe that was one of the waivers. I'd have to.
I think I know what I.
Lot coverage was code requires a maximum, yes. So the, so the all, so it seems like the regulation is 20 for structures, 40 overall. What they're proposing is 50 for structures and 75 overall.
Any future work is really threading a needle here, isn't it?
That's, seems to be the case.
Could you say that again, Mr. Finer?
I said any, any subsequent work is, is really threading a needle. I just, from the, from the, I don't want to get off on tangents here, but first off, when you go through this stuff, can you just measure the, mention the numbers if it does happen to correspond, just so I can?
Sure.
Keep up, but. I had a problem with the density of this thing from the beginning.
Yeah.
What, um, what size is the one down the street? How many acres is that?
Larger, has fewer units.
4.67.
What? 4.6, that's 16, yes, 20.
But those are duplexes.
Yeah.
They're not single family. So there, there's no cutting through the yard, they're, that's, in my mind, this project would have been better with duplexes.
Do you want Mr. Cody to make this list first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's let him finish?
Yeah, oh yeah, sorry.
Nope, no problem.
But I just, that's the way I think.
Yeah, understood. It's just, it meant to be a discussion. I guess the next one was 45. We noted that, you know, for intersection kind of site distance, there'll probably be some needing to clear of trees that were probably, that are in the towns right of way, not necessarily in the property. So we've discussed that on previous projects, so there'll be some coordination there between the town and the applicant on how that's maintained. And then I guess the last one I wanted to note was 52.
State.
Or state, or, yeah, in case today, that's the highway. The last one's 52, again, at the time of the letter on the 20th, we had questions about the depth of the test pit, the test pit wasn't deep enough to, you know, gauge how deep the groundwater was in the specific location or to a depth that we were comfortable with. They subsequently did another investigation and that's not been resolved. I guess the other, just large, I mean, besides all the waivers they're asking for being a subdivision, they are kind of deferring the creation of those final subdivision plans to a later date, because I, which, which we understand, because depending on which waivers are granted, not granted, it will affect the geometries and layouts and how these things are, so they didn't want to necessarily charge forward with the subdivision plan, not knowing what relief would be granted or not. So as far as approving it, I mean, a lot of it seemed, a lot of the subdivision comments are administrative, like plans weren't stamped and things like that, things that are easily rectified, you know, titled like signature blocks and things like that. But the subdivision plans haven't been formally submitted at this point, so it's just something else to note.
Relative to the aspects and, I don't know if they've done any borings or whatever, but how much, how much ledge is out there?
In the area, well, I guess, the, the stormwater system's towards the road, and so that's where they did the investigation, so there was no ledge there. I guess they can't speak to the rest of the property.
Well, I was just thinking, the more ledge, the more this thing works like, kind of like an artesian well.
Sure.
And, I mean, the, the applicant testified that he's taking all the runoff from all the neighboring properties and the highway, and I just have, I think, a legitimate concern with the potential for this thing to get overwhelmed, but I'm not an engineer, although I am educated in it. All right, I'm just meandering.
So I guess those, I mean, those are kind of summary quickly, I mean, those are generally where we're at. The meeting with the applicant was productive, we did go through a lot of things, get a lot of things rectified, but there are still some, you know, concerns out there.
Can you explain 52 to me?
52, so the, the bottom of this, the bottom of the stormwater system needs to exhibit a two-foot vertical separation to the groundwater table. The initial, the initial information provided wasn't deep enough to confirm that, like the, the test pit information they provided barely got to the bottom of the system, so it was still, it was unclear where the groundwater table was. They've subsequently gone back and gone deeper and still didn't find anything, so we're comfortable with that.
Anybody else have any? Go ahead, Scott.
From a macro perspective, when I look at all of your items, it's, it's almost, I was looking at 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 15, 16, all dimensional to some degree that due to the fact that the configuration of the project is difficult and just the topography, elevation changes, the size and shape of it. In your opinion, is the density just too large for this project and that's what causes all of these configuration issues? If there were 16 units, could we get the road bigger? Could we get radius? Could we get setbacks better? In your opinion?
Obviously. I mean, the less units, the more room you're gonna have. I mean, that's, goes without saying. You know, you don't need to be an engineer to determine that. The density, I think we had, let's see, I'm not seeing it. I believe the density, I mean, granted being very dense, is within what some of the, you know, housing regulations allow for, but again, those are probably steered more towards like an apartment, you know, if you have an apartment building that sits on this lot, you know, you could have 20 units in one building instead of having 20 individual houses. So from that perspective, like the density is within those ranges, but when you're talking about 20 houses versus like duplexes or something to the effect that would minimize or maximize the area you had, you know, you can get more, more units in smaller, in, in smaller footprints.
Smaller footprint.
Yeah, it is quite dense.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other? I have a question on the snow removal. They're planning on putting the snow in that roundabout?
Yes.
Isn't it just gonna flow down the street and create like ice?
Which is, but, well, but which is typical, I mean, typically, if the snow is just plowed to the sides, it's gonna melt and get in the street as well. I mean, I think if it was warm enough for it to melt, it's warm enough.
But I mean, this is quite a slope.
Yes. And, but they have the catch, they have, there's multiple sets of catch basins and obviously if you had some kind of major event, yeah, it might be a concern, but I think for the typical, so, so if it's warm enough for it to melt, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in that kind of free cycle that would get to the catch basins and it would get to the stormwater basin.
In a major event, basically in one spot, and it would be much easier for them to truck out.
Also, yeah.
Also, yeah.
Right.
So I mean, that, that becomes less of a concern and.
But I mean, for a residential subdivision, you're typically just plowing it to the sides of the street. Obviously at the cul-de-sac, it's gonna get, they'll probably, yeah, utilize that middle area for some. We did note that there is a, one of the common septic systems is in the cul-de-sac as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, there's no necessarily regulation against it, but intuitively, putting a bunch of snow that's gonna melt on top of a system that's designed to infiltrate as well can be somewhat problematic, but.
Especially if it's close to ledge.
If that ends up being the case.
Madam?
I mean, obviously, the, the, septic systems will all need their own, all their own soil testing and things, so they'll see if there's, you know, there'll be more investigations at those times, but, yeah. And the cul-de-sac is obviously, you know, the farthest point in where the topography is climbing, so the chances of potentially hitting something are obviously greater.
Mr. Cody, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but maybe I am a little bit. You come from a very prestigious engineering firm that I know relatively well from his There are a lot of waivers involved and potentially overcrowding in the subdivision. If you were to take the, in your mind, the top five, maybe six items that this board should really be focusing on, maybe it's 10, could you possibly outline those for us? Are my eyes pushing too hard?
No, just bear with me for a second. I mean, the wildlife corridor is something that isn't particularly, I mean, from an engineering standpoint, isn't particularly of a concern. They are maintaining the highway right of way to the rear where there would be passage for potential wildlife if necessary. Obviously, all the ones related to like dimensions, like lot coverage, setbacks, those are concerning from a, from a density standpoint. Like the, the layout width we talked about, the grade, the, the grade of the road, again, they've put it at the maximum. So again, if they're, they've left themselves no tolerance to just be a little off in the future, you know, comes to find out that they built the road and it ends up being steeper than they had anticipated, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be compliant.
But that would be engineered and checked along the way.
You would assume. But again, but again, there's no tall, like there's, I mean, if, if we were, if we were, you know, if the maximum's 10, you'd shoot for 8.
Yeah.
And if you end up at 9, you're still good. If you, if you designed it to 10 and you're at 10 and like it ends up being 11, well then, like, you know, this, typically it's hard to, it's, it's not something that's, I guess, best practice to max out every last design on.
Somebody competent can, can do it properly.
Sure.
It's just gonna take a little more.
It's, it'll be more, yes. Right. Like if the maximum's 10 and you make it 8, well then, yeah, you have some wiggle room. If you need 10 and you know you gotta be 10, you're gonna have to be checking it constantly.
The question, I'm sorry. The question has to be, if the max is 10 and you're safer at 8, why can't this be 8? In other words, if you take the center line on the profile and bring it down from 10 to 8.
I guess, I mean, for that, it becomes more, then it's, we're even talking about more earthwork, more removal.
It's removal.
Yeah, because you're flattening that road out, so there's more you have to take out, and they're already taking out quite a bit.
All right, so that's why it's probably staying, they're at, they're at 10.
Yeah.
So what, what happens if now you're, they're done and they're above the 10? I mean, what happens?
I mean, you'd have to do it over.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's part of like the, you know, it's part of the as-built process, it would become the light that they're too steep, but their recommendation would be to have them fix it.
So they'll get a jail-free card?
I would not think so, no.
They're just gonna have to visit their benchmarks more often and, and ensure that.
Again, you've just left, you haven't left yourself any wiggle room, that's all, yeah.
Again, more threading the needle here, but.
Right. Right. Yeah, I mean, it's possible.
Possible.
It's, yeah, I mean, but just, you're, you're not leaving yourself a lot of tolerance, that's all.
True.
Which is a concern. I mean, typically, I mean, typically you leave yourself some, it's more ideal to leave yourself some tolerance.
Well, that part doesn't
I think we would have to condition it to be checked more often.
Yeah, it'd have to be as-built, as it went. But, I mean, it would be in their interest and, you know, any kind of competence that can be
I mean, of course, I mean, since, since that end, it could possibly go the other way. I mean, because it's designed at 10, it might end up at nine.
Yeah.
I mean, so it's just, they're, they're trying to, like you said, thread the needle.
Yeah.
I didn't get all, so I just want to make sure that my question is fully answered. Are there any other things that you would point out to this board that really you're not going to let happen? You wouldn't want to have it happen? I beg your defer to the board, but
No, I mean, like, I mean, like the dead-end roadway length isn't, doesn't seem to be excessive. The cul-de-sac radius, as long as the fire department's comfortable, is in, I don't know, open space, protection of natural features. I mean, those are all kind of more subjective things that
No open space.
Well, right.
Yeah.
But from an engineering state, it's not necessarily like, it's just, it's not alarming. It's just, it's just, they're just not providing any.
Just don't want to be driving down that on the black ice event either.
Like reductions of sidewalk widths, as long as, we begin, it's still ADA compliant. So those, I mean, I guess it's the dimensional ones which didn't result in
Are they ADA compliant?
Again, they haven't, they haven't, they haven't gone to that full subdivision level, which would then determine that.
They'd have to be.
Mr. Cody, how many
They're going to have to be, they're going to have, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's the law. I mean, they'll have to be, but yeah.
How many of your open points, I've read your, I've read the report, the responses, how many of these are either eliminated or significantly reduced if this density is decreased by 20 or 40%?
I would imagine a lot of them.
You already?
I would imagine a lot of them. It's, yeah, because it's just, then it would be just, you know, you're taking, I don't even know how many there are. I mean, you're taking
Four or eight.
You're taking 25-ish waivers and probably, yeah, cutting those in half, if not more.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I don't know whether to save it for discussion or mention it now.
You mentioned it now?
I mean, there've been numerous points here. I mean, this is a very difficult spot to build. But I mean, obviously, they're building needed housing. And I, I don't have any real concerns that, that quality construction isn't going to occur here. I'm just completely bothered by the density of this thing.
Yeah.
And in my mind, if we're going to allow 20 units, it should be duplexes. If we're going to allow single-family, I mean, it should mimic what's down the road at, at 16. I mean, it started out at 24 and we all knew that that was
Crazy.
It should have started at 20 to begin with and been whittled. And I, you know, I'm, I said, this is a 40B. I mean, it's, it's going to get built, but how? And 70%?
75.
Seventy.
Oh, I thought you said 75, sorry.
Is the greatest I've ever heard of. And I'm like, I've only been here two years and I certainly didn't pay attention to a lot of this stuff beforehand. But, I don't know, I mean, those are just my honest thoughts and
Yeah.
perceptions.
I feel it would be a lot safer too, because then if it was duplex, they'd be able to get in the back and repair and it would just, it'd be more open space, it'd be, it'd be a better project.
And I mean, the wildlife corridor is mostly on the highway or certainly ample. I'm not really, I don't know, at, you know, some point. That, that doesn't bother me. I mean, look at an aerial photo of Falmouth in the summertime. It's nothing but green and ponds and, I mean, this town is over 50% open space and climbing. But
Anybody else?
This would absolutely be the most dense
Yeah.
development in this town.
Yeah.
Because I think that's a correct statement.
Probably. Scott, you have anything?
Good for now. Thank you. Thank you.
Frank, you all set? Any follow-up up here?
Questions for Mr. Cody? No, I have no questions for him.
Everybody all set with?
I have no questions for Mr. Cody, but I do have things for the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
You know, I had wanted to, I'd want to have Rich Tabazinski come up here prior to, you know, right next to deal with Mr. Cody's response. But I got some notes and I got to tell you something, I do a lot of detailed research. I do it all the time and I don't miss too much of that stuff. In fact, in terms of the density of this development, this is one of the least dense developments that's been in front of this board quite some time. You've got one right now up on Brook Hill Road. It's 40 acres, 40 units on three acres. The one over there on Kendall Lane, although it's 4.75 acres, they've got about an acre of wetland. So it's really in 3.57 acres, 3.75 acres. They've got 28 units. Our lot sizes, for the most part, are bigger than theirs. They just finished that development just recently. The ones you go to on Main Street, yeah, sure, they're apartment buildings. But before I speak on that, let's talk about the one right over here, next, I think it was the folks that was here before us. That's 18 units per acre. That's what it is. The town, the town
Which one?
Walker Street.
Walker Street.
It's a living unit.
Apartment house and not single family. It's not really the same.
Apples and oranges.
Well, yeah, but it may have, we're talking about density and a lot of other issues that go along with that. So I've looked at almost every single 40B that's happened in the last 10 years. I got a list, Ed Norrie provided me with a list and I studied. I studied each and every single one of them. Which ones had sidewalks? Many of them didn't. Which ones had lights? Many of them didn't. Which ones have play areas? Almost nonexistent. I can provide all that for you. Again, this development here, when I match it up against the other ones, we have put in more than the other folks have put in. Now, when it comes to the, the, when it comes to the, the road, you know, we've done what was asked of us and, and have spent a lot of money with engineering to make sure that the pitch of that road matched the engineering that was required to handle the water. So the stormwater has all been managed. Mr. Cody didn't mention anything about the stormwater. He didn't need to. It's all been managed. In fact, I want to speak for a second on the, and then Eddie Montero, who I mentioned, is here to say a few things on it. We went through and, you know, first of all, I was brought up in excavation business. I saw a letter that came in that said you shouldn't, we did 30. I was brought up in excavation. My father was excavator in this town for 45 years. Eddie Montero does it right now. He's, he's an active excavator. The mini excavator goes back there. There's enough room for everything that take place. I submitted the paperwork on this. We submitted copious paperwork to address anything that you came up with. There is no problem whatsoever to get to those, I think it's six septic systems behind those units. There's no problem whatsoever. I measured our units and looked at the math based, versus on the Wild Harbor development down the street. Yeah, they got duplexes, so they got more room to get behind there. They've got no play areas. They've got no sidewalks. They've got lights in front of the houses, but they got no general houses. So, so we've got those things. We've put those things in, you know. So we've worked hard to answer all of your concerns. Every single one of them we addressed. We did work very closely with Mr. Cody here. So, so the issue of density, to me, when I look at the other buildings in this town, regardless of whether or not they're rentals, somebody once said, well, yeah, suppose there's a fire. Well, suppose there's a fire and one of those buildings are building in town. I mean, lots of things are going to perish, including people. So our density is absolutely less than just about everything that's happened in this town. So when I hear a statement that we're higher, I'm shocked. The people that were just up here at 18 units an acre. So
It's not a nap, excuse me, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
It's not a nap comparison.
I'm sorry?
It's not appropriate comparison. It's not a proper comparison. You need to compare single-family homes, duplexes. Talk about that to the court, so we understand. Don't talk about apartment complexes.
What's the difference?
It's different. It's a different situation.
Give me, give me
They're mid-rise.
Okay, so
So let's talk, I'm, I'm, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
So you, you create a very confusing situation when you talk about mid-rise apartments, single families. Make appropriate comparisons. Let's talk about your density compared to what's down the street with
Kendall Lane.
No, Kendall Lane's flat.
Kendall Lane is flat. Okay, now, are we talking about density or are we talking about grade? Because those are two different issues.
They are.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Because of the density, when you have that type of grade, it does affect, that grade affects the density. So when you want to get into all of this, in the, in the gray changes and the walls between them, you don't, you haven't even talked about the type of walls going in. Because some of these walls that go over two feet start leaning back one way or the other. So they're going to impose into, if it's a block wall, stone wall, whatever it is, some of them, as they go up, lean this way. You haven't even talked about them yet. I don't, I don't mean to really get into that stuff.
Is this, in my opinion, I appreciate your comment, and I'm glad you said that, because in my opinion, that comment is left up, that, that, that construction and the details of that construction and the quality of that, that those retaining walls are left up to the building commissioner. And the, and the
Madam Chair, I'm not going to argue that
And the engineer
Mr., sorry, I'm not arguing or debating that point. Yes, the building commissioner's in charge of that. We have to look at what you put in front of us and make those decisions based on what we see on the plans. And it'll be coming up, we'll be talking about the septic systems in the back, the distance between, how you get there. Mr. Duffy brought this up in the very beginning, probably the first meeting, and I'm really getting out of step here because I've got a whole list of things to talk about. But if you're going to make comparisons, compare subdivisions, houses, not apartments. And with regard to sidelines, can we get into it? Can we get back there and not get back there? I'll bring up some things on that that you can then
I understand.
Can this be brought otherwise?
All due respect, I believe that we have to compare it to other regulations and the guidelines. And do we meet that test? I'm not trying to be like everybody else. We're providing affordable housing. Do we meet the test from an engineering perspective and from a building perspective and from a wastewater perspective? Have we satisfied those, I guess, areas that, that talk about safety? And we have. So I'll
May I just, because it, again, I apologize for interrupting. But you're asking us for certain waivers that we do not have to provide. Everybody thinks, well, it's a 40B, so we have to give it up. Does it happen? Yes, it does. Because you don't want to have to appeal it, we don't have to want to deal with the appeal. So we try and work things out with you in these meetings as best possible. Because we're going to condition if we approve this that way. So when you talk about that, all we have to look at are the plans you have. And if this board, which you've asked us to waive the subdivision control on, believes that it's too dense, then that's who we believe. But you have an opportunity to now convince us otherwise. And you're not doing that right now. You're not doing that.
Well, what do you want to hear from me?
I want you to convince us that this is not too dense, that you can get your machines back there to put in your, a 12,000-pound tank if it had to be replaced, those sorts of things. I can go through a list of questions, but it's not appropriate for me to do so at this point in time. All I'm asking you to do is, you aren't comparisons, I went a little too far to the right on this thing. Make comparisons, subdivision.
Okay, I want, what I want
I'm the attorney and I'm wondering if perhaps to speak to that one issue
Excuse me, we don't, I don't know your name or
I'm sorry. I apologize. My name is Vicki Mitchell and I'm representing Mr. Pina.
Come up to the podium so that the capable can hear, please.
I would just like to say that I represent, I'm from Peter Daigle's office. Mr. Daigle has been before you guys on the other five occasions. Mr. Daigle's not available, so I apologize for not introducing myself initially. I just wanted to step in that I see this concern about the septic issues. And I believe that Mr. Pina has someone who can speak to exactly what they would be able to do in the density. So could we have Mr. Montero come up and speak to that issue since that's concerning at this point?
And I am. Just one point. I mean, he just presented to us that, I believe that he said that the Brook Hill Road project was more dense than yours. Brook Hill Road project is 58%. Yours is 70. It's certainly amongst the highest that we've ever encountered.
How many acres is Brook Hill?
It's the density. I mean, it's, it's 58%.
Density, density
The amount of lot coverage that you're allowed. You're taking 70%. They're using 58. So your statement was incorrect.
I beg to differ. Let me, listen, I don't want to get into a back and forth in this, but lot coverage speaks to stormwater. Density speaks to how many units on the lot. They've got, they've
Covered by structures and impervious surfaces. Yours is 70%.
That's lot
Theirs is 58. You said it was greater.
No, no.
That's incorrect. It's a simple math equation.
Well, it is simple math. When you're talking about lot coverage, that really goes right to stormwater. And we've got a stormwater system that handles that. Density has got to do with how many units per acre. That's standard right across the country. There is no other, I don't know any other way to calculate density. So let's get, I want to, Mr. Montero, I would like Mr. Montero to speak before
Mr. Montero, explain how the trucks are going to
Before I have the engineer to speak.
Madam Chair, is this the time or should the applicant continue on, let him finish what he has to say and then allow us to ask questions as we go along? Because this is getting too far afield in too many different places. If Mr. Pina would like to, I'm, I'm speaking through you, Madam Chair, please stop me if you'd be, I would like to hear what Mr. Pina has to say. I think the rest of the board would too. But do it in a way, if you're making comparisons, that are equal. And then let us ask you questions as the chair would set it up to do. And then your experts can answer those questions. Or you can.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, you, you've raised a question about access to the leachant fields. That's what we're talking about here. Whether or not there's room for that. That's why Mr. Montero was here. I'd like him to address that. And then ultimately, I would have my engineering firm stand up and address some of these concerns.
Could I, Madam Chair?
Let's have Mr. Montero come up.
To you.
Come on up, please.
David Montero, Falmouth. Are you concerned about the construction when the septic system's going in? Is that what the concern is of the board?
Our concern is the, is the density. And the, among the greatest concern, at least mine is, is the amount of units that are put on this. And a perfect example is the one down the street. It's a larger lot and it has less units. And also, they're duplexes, which use less. I mean, this is, covers 70% with, with structures, parking, impervious surfaces. I mean, that's amongst the highest that has, what's ever been in front of me. So, and I don't know everything. I've only been here a couple of years. I mean, I, I
That's my, the engineers can address that. But I think there was concerns about
It was concern because all of a sudden we learned last meeting that there's going to be retaining walls. We didn't know that ahead of time.
Okay.
So now there's these retaining walls, which we don't, I don't know the width, the height, any of that kind of stuff. We don't, we don't, I mean, maybe it's on this one that we just received.
Again, I'll have the, the engineers address that.
Okay.
Montero, I think that
Go ahead.
One of our concerns relating back to the very first meeting was up at the top of the hill at the end of this cul-de-sac, around that traffic circle or turnaround, there are now four lots. And the concern was, they're going to have septic systems that, to us, looking at the plan, are going to be inaccessible places. And if there's a problem, they have to have it pumped. They may have to go onto somebody else's property to get access. They may not have access at all because of, because of topography issues. I think that's what I raised and I think that's what Mr., what everybody else is concerned about too. And it's an element of density. But what can you tell us about, as, you're in the excavator, what can you tell us about access to those lots at the top, lots 10, 11, 12, and 13, according to the last plan?
Can you guys put that up?
Can they be accessed and can you make the necessary repairs or improvements?
Can they be accessed, and can you make the necessary repairs or improvements?
Okay, which units are you on?
11, 12, and 13, up there at the top, by the traffic circle. They have access, they have frontage on the circle, it's 15 feet. One of them, I think, is maybe 19 feet or something like that, but they're pretty small.
Okay, well, a couple of things. The, the leaching fields that they have designed are perforated pipe, which is Schedule 40, so it's not, they're not using the regular, say, 500-gallon chambers. So if you ever see the perforated pipe or Schedule 40 pipe, it's the white pipe they usually see inside of a house, but this is pressurized. So the leaching fields, you can basically, wherever the size of the pit is, you're probably going to have anywhere from, say, 25 to 30, 25 to 30 PVC pipes in your, in your leach field. Now, as far as the tank is concerned, depending upon, you're talking about if you can get the truck back, usually there's an articulating truck that brings the, the tank in, and I know Mr. Palucci was saying that it's 12,000 pounds. Well, there's an alternative to that, is if you, the tank is too large, or you can't get behind there, you have an alternative using a H20 infiltrated plastic tank, which is only about 500 pounds, and you can pick it up with a, with a skid steer, with the, with pallet forks, and I'll give you those, so you can take a look at that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is this unit compatible? I have no idea.
So if there was a problem, say, down, down the road, where the, if the system has failed, basically you have to have a licensed inspector go in there, and say what's failed, if the system has, the leach field has, has hydraulic failure. What would happen then is, you're replacing the leaching field, you're not replacing the tank. But that would be determined by the engineer, or the Board of Health agent, would say whether or not the tank could stay, or that would have to be replaced. But what you have in front of you would be an alternative, even during construction, to, instead of having the concrete H10, 1500-gallon tank, you could have a 1500-gallon tank infiltrator, H20 plastic tank that could be put in.
Are these compatible with Title V regulations?
We did one of those. Those were accepted by the, the health agent in Falmouth. Scott McGann accepted that, on a job we did.
Are they also able to upgrade to a nitrogen?
Well, the nitrogen, when, when you do it, is the space that you have in front of it, which you.
And that pipe can attach to this, to upgrade?
Yes. It's the same thing as a concrete tank, except it's just made out of H20, it's H20, which has loading, it's made out of.
I ask a question about.
Go ahead, Tony.
So you indicated that you're using the Clean 2 Nitro 2KS tank, which again, is a concrete tank, and according to the company, weighs 12,000 pounds. I mean, somebody's going to.
I, I didn't say that. You were mentioning about a regular 1500-gallon tank.
I'm asking a question only because it just came up. The question was, when IA systems are required, can somebody get back there? And so the clean, the, the cut sheet that we have in the latest folder, is a Clean 2 Nitro 2KS. Am I correct on that?
I, I'm not sure on that.
Oh, that's what the cut sheet is. Oh, let's just agree that that's what the cut sheet is right now. And according to Clean 2, that's a concrete tank, it's roughly 12,000 pounds. It's going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
And when I talked to Shea Concrete today, the only way they're going to get in something like that is, is, because it's a straight lift, as you know, better than I know.
Correct.
It's a, it's a straight-up lift, and it's going to be their truck, their truck is, needs 10 feet to get back there. So then, these tanks, I think, I think this, I, nothing but, this is a great idea. It's going to be what happens, and I think it's signed up this way, what happens when the IA system, if, is required, and I think that's where the town's going, how are you going to get that back there? Maybe the technology will change, but according to Shea, you need a 10-foot truck, and you only have seven, roughly half feet.
That is correct. I mean, we've done it before, we had no room. Basically, we did one in Marion, where Marion's on sewer, but they needed to do a tight tank. And if I explain to you how we did it, it'll be another debate, but you do, what would happen is, you'd have a crane.
As long as it passes.
Yeah.
It's all mattered.
Mm-hmm.
So you're telling this board, because this is really important.
Absolutely.
It's, it's an issue. You're telling this board that seven and three-quarter feet would be sufficient in the future to get the current technology, in this case, the cut sheet is a Clean 2 Nitro 2KS, back there.
That's if you were installing the, the IA system?
Yes.
Well, I could explain the way you could do it. I mean, basically, if you were installing the, the units, the existing lots that you have on there, when you're clearing the lots, if you have five units, you'd have an open field, where before you even start construction, where your foundations are, and then you could actually come in and place the IA units, along with the septic system. We do it all the time. If we have a foundation in, and we need to connect the septic system, you have the open area where you can actually drive up to. You're actually talking as if the, all of the units are up, and you have no way to, to get back to the house.
And I agree, and I think that's a perfect argument, to put the IA systems in now, but that's another subject.
No, I'm just saying, if it was approved, that's, that's the way you would do it.
Yes, and I understand that, which is why this board is concerned about, Mr. Duffy brought it up in one of the early meetings, access is key. At some point in time, it's likely we're going to go to an IA system in town here, we don't know that for sure, but these folks have to be able to get that in. And right now, we have a very dense situation, very tight situation. We have a peer engineer who comes from an engineering firm that is.
Right, right, I know, Mr. Colte.
Inqualified, and agrees with us. So this board has to listen to our, to the peer engineer.
I ask it, so, what, you, you know more about, obviously, so you're saying that if it does go to an IA, that they're going to have to remove this tank, and then put in the concrete one?
I, I'm not an expert. He's going to have to tell you that, no. This Clean 2 Nitro 2KS, we're going to that little spot they set aside, theoretically, when they spoke with the Board of Health, Scott McGann, somebody said, it's the Clean 2 2KS, it's got to go in there, make sure you have enough room for it. Somebody had to make a decision as to how big that spot is, and will it fit in there? Because otherwise, they're in bigger trouble. If it doesn't fit there.
It's a reserve area that the engineers put on the plan when you file for your Title V septic system, when it gets the building permit.
Well, this is a little different. This, I don't disagree. This is a reserve area, but it is for a IA system. And I'm, and this cut sheet on the Nitro 2KS has to fit into that. That is a concrete tank, unless the technology changes. I think this is a great idea, if you can do this, have to do this. But it doesn't solve the problem if these folks have to go to an IA system. So why not correct that now, by increasing some of the setbacks to allow, at least for a 10, 12-foot wide vehicle to get in there? That's all we're talking about.
Yes. Again, I can't speak to that. I'm, I'm just speaking on the procedure of what could be done on the, on the systems. So you'd have to talk to the engineers.
Let's make sure we understand. Madam Chair, may I? Let's make sure we understand. You, if you had to in a tight spot, you could put in these IM1530 infiltrated tanks, which are fiberglass, and you've told this board that Scott McGann, our Board of Health agent, has approved these in the past. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So that solves some of the problems.
For, for D-Nite?
Not, that's.
For D-Nite? A standard.
No, that's, that's your standard septic, that's your standard septic tank.
But is it compatible with?
That's what I asked, and he said, yes, you can add on.
So the next question is, is it compatible with an IA system? In this case, well, you gave us the Clean 2 system on the cut sheet. Is that all compatible? I have no clue. This board doesn't have.
Well, if you've ever seen it, I mean, there's, there's a project right down on Sea Spray, on the water, they're using the system that you're talking about. Basically, the component for the septic tank is in the front, and then the system that you're talking about has the piping going from the septic tank right into the, into the AI system. So it's.
So you're saying that that is something that our Board.
It's compatible.
Has approved. So that's the answer to the question, it's compatible. So it still goes back to, how do you get it in there, should it become necessary? If the Board of Health, they've left us wide open, we know what we're going through in this community, we know what the state of Massachusetts has mandated, and eventually it's going, it's likely to happen. So why not make it, make a subdivision work, these lots work now? That's what this, this was concerned with.
That's fine. I can't address that. That's the applicant and the engineers. I'm just trying to.
I think the question is, in five years hypothetically, if we have to put a 15-ton, or 15K system in a backyard, how can you do it, if there's only seven feet between houses?
You wouldn't, the way you would do it is, you'd have a crane, and you'd lift it up over the house into the back. That's the way it's done. It's no different, you can laugh, I mean, it's no different if you have a tight area when you're trying to put a foundation in. How do you get the concrete back there? You have to pump it. So, and we've done it before, I mean, you can, you know, chuckle at whatever you want, but we've done it before, and that's, that's the way it would be done.
So then, what you're saying is, you're solving the.
I'm not, I'm not solving anything. You just asked, and I told you that's, that's the way I would do it.
The board needs somebody to solve it.
Well, that's, that's the way you would do it. You'd have, you'd have a crane, and you'd have it over into the area where the system goes in.
Affordable units, going to have to pay for the crane?
Yep. Well, I've got a series of questions on all of that, too.
I believe you do.
I don't know if you have anything.
I'm getting educated, I'll just.
God, do you have any questions down there?
Mr. Montero, have you ever installed a shared system in Falmouth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Whereabouts, do you recall which one?
We did the 40B over on Brick Hill Road Place.
Okay.
Did the site work, did the drainage, did the sewage?
I was looking through the, the most recent information from Mr. Pena, and Scott McGann had said that this is not a fully-formed septic design, so I can't comment on whether health can permit this design, as shown. Further engineering and soil evaluations will be needed. I know it's not for you, that's for the applicant, the engineer, but I was just wondering about the shared systems.
Yeah, well, we did the, the perk test where the shared system is down below, where you're looking at, where it says 1A. There was two perk tests that were done there.
Oh, one more, hey, okay. Thank you.
Mark, you all sat down there?
I'm waiting for Tony.
All right. Tony, can you take it away then?
Okay.
Tony, you ready?
Sorry.
Buckle up, I can ask you a question.
Oh, want me to ask questions?
Well, I don't know if Ed is, if we're all done with septic tank.
Madam Chair, I have asked for the moment, the questions I need to ask about the septic tank. I've got some answers, and I think this board, hopefully they're on the record, that we can use, as necessary, but I have other questions when the time comes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
Again, Robert Pena, before the engineer comes up here, I want to say that, I myself, I was here one night when Scott McGann got up, and he gave a detailed discussion about where IA systems would go, which watersheds. I saw online where he made the presentation to this board. I saw when the presentation was made to this board, from the Water Quality Committee. And on there, they delineated, all the watersheds are delineated recently, in September, they came up with another study. And not one of those studies, they're recommending IA systems for this watershed. In fact, what they've done, the last thing they did, and there it is right there, I guess there's something like, what, 18,400 houses? They're only looking to put IA systems, there are like 6,000 of them. This watershed, there's, there's no nitrogen-sensitive issue in this watershed. So I feel like, like, I've, I've brought this information in to this board numerous times. The board's had presentations to it, several times that I know of. There's a general question, statement, not every house in this town is going to have an IA system, regardless of whether or not they're on town, septic sewage or not. I've, I've actually had Ed Eichner, who actually wrote the, the paperwork for the Town of Falmouth wastewater treatment plant, and he also wrote that same information, his organization, for the Department of Environmental Protection. Nowhere is anybody saying that this watershed is going to have, is nitrogen-sensitive. So I feel as though, we've put a lot of time, all due respect to the board, this issue comes up time and time again, one way or the other. I submitted another letter today. These letters all cost money. And, and there is no evidence anywhere. I even went down to, you know, some of those letters that come in, they speak to the same issue, from this organization that, that, you know, makes money by putting these, these IA systems. So like, it's, it's, this, this issue has been exhausted. It's absolutely been exhausted. If Scott McGann stands up in front of the board, and the Board of Health has got the final say on this thing, subject to town meeting, or whichever way it goes, here's another one that came from. This is from the Town of Falmouth. You know, the Town of Falmouth, like, well, from what I can see from all the research that's been done, they're trying to mitigate the problem, and not exasperate the amount of money, by doing a fine job of navigating how to keep the cost down. And like, coming in front of this board, I'm hearing about the cost may go up, it may go up in this watershed, there is no evidence from the organizations that, that matter, who studied this watershed, for the, for Amy Lowell, and the town wastewater problem. It was studied by this Cape Cod Preservation, they're one of the top groups, then there's, then there's this group, Cape Cod Commission, then we've got the Planning Board, then we've got the Town of Falmouth. A town meeting voted this in. That's what confuses me. I mean, town meeting, Frank, you must know this, town meeting voted it in, and said, let's do this study. They spent $360,000, and this is what we come up with. That's one of the reasons we bought this particular property. And so here, we're basically, and what's the word, it's, it's kind of like this, this issue that affects everything in the development, that's a non-issue. I've left all the paperwork, we left it here nine days ago. I mean, has anybody read the paperwork? We've given you everything we can give you, we can't give you anymore. So it makes me wonder why this keeps coming up.
May I, Madam Chairman? I think the concern, Mr. Pena, is that we don't know what we don't know about what's going to happen with this issue. Our concern is to protect affordable units, because this map, the same way that federal, the FEMA flood maps change from year to year, in five years from now, this map may be outdated, this project may suddenly be in one of those impacted watersheds. My real concern, as it applies to, I think, what's before us right now, though, is how the, how tight the lot lines are, and could an excavator get in, in the event of a conventional Title V failure in the backyard, or is it going to be problematic?
And I, and I put, I put the information in there today, last week. It shows the size machine that can get back there, they've got many excavators that weigh 3,500 pounds, that can put in a, of course, we were talking about the leach fields at that point, now we've gone from the leach fields to suppose the, basically what you're asking right now, first, we're talking about the leaching field, and we built two of them at the same time, there's a spare space for one of them. When Mr. Montero's talking about the perforated pipes, he's basically saying, they don't weigh that much, it's a pipe, it's a PVC pipe with holes in it, okay? Those, I mean, two 10-year-olds can carry those out of there. And so, we actually, if you look at this plan, we went into the, and the engineer will And so we actually, if you look at this plan, we went into the, and the engineer will speak to this, we actually, where we had taken those four houses out, when we dropped from 24 units to 20, we have utilized that space to slide all the units over so we basically have about nine-foot setback between these units. The town requirement is only 10 feet. So we gave you, the information that we gave you, that Atlanta Design has given you, we gave you the smallest situation. I think it's 7 feet 9 inches. That's the smallest one, setback. The town setback's only 9 feet. So do I have to be concerned about every setback in septic system in the town? We're at 9 feet. If you go down, I actually, I put in the cut sheets, I took the time to go down to a couple of these places that, like Bobcat, you can go there yourself and talk to the folks. I gave you the information.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Go for it.
You gave us a cut sheet on, I think it's Bobcat excavators. You put an arrow on the E20, and I think I just heard you say that you would be using something like that. Well, the arrow on E20, the lift capacity is 1,098 pounds.
Yeah.
It's not going to lift that tank.
Listen, you put the tanks in before you build the houses, if you got to.
We're talking about the future.
Construction, listen, I have been, my father did excavation and put in the septic in this town for 45 years. That's what we did for a living, for 45 years. Eddie Montero's been doing it for 25 years. So, man, did I put them all in? No, it wasn't always around, but I put a bunch of them in, you know? I put the ones in at Falmouth Village West.
Can I just respond?
It would be good if I could...
If this cut sheet says 1,098 pounds and you've got a 10,000, 12,000-pound tank, I don't see how that corresponds.
What 10 and 12? When I was here at the last meeting, Mr. Petucci, all due respect, we were talking about leaching fields at that point. And so that's what you asked me about. You didn't ask me about this other...
I'm talking about, look, it gets a little confusing.
I'm not confused.
All right. Manner of speech. I'm not confused either. The machine you pointed out in the cut sheet cannot lift 10,000, 12,000 pounds. Bottom line. It takes a 10-foot-wide truck to get down beside that house.
Says who?
You don't have it.
Says who?
You're gonna have it.
Says who?
Shay Concrete, who installs the...
They don't install them. They just deliver them.
I'm sorry. I've put a lot of septic, I'm not going to get into that. I've done this, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, I'm arguing. I apologize. I've done this. It's not like I just was born yesterday. I've done it. The truck comes, it lifts it, and puts it in. That's how it's done. Maybe you don't do it that way, but that's the way Shay Concrete does it. I'm sorry, but that's the way they do it. You pointed out the E, you're the one that put this cut sheet in the book, and I'm not arguing with you. I'm just trying to point these things out for the board. You pointed out the E20 would be the machine used. Its lift capacity is 1,098 pounds. That's a far cry. So you can't get that...
And when I said to you initially, at the very beginning of this, the last time I stood in front of this board, you asked me about how we're gonna take care of a failed leaching field. And a failed leaching field is stolen. I answered that question. Now you're coming up with, well, suppose you, suppose the tank fails.
No. Not what he's coming up with. You can modify it to a D-nitrate system. And you mind if I jump in here?
Go ahead.
The very beginning, when you came here, you read us a letter from Eichner, and then you went the next day and you up to the office and you threatened to sue us or whatever. You want to know where I got a hold of the letter. All I did was regurgitate what you said to us. And that man in that letter stated that at this point in time, it is not a nitrogen-sensitive area. Nobody has stated absolutely that it will not...
It's right there in front of you.
That's at this point in time. Nobody has stated absolutely that this is not going to be the condition. And we're not concerned about anything except the affordable units and how those people are going to have to pay for this. Eddie told us you have to use a crane. I believe Eddie, I know he's experienced. He knows what he's doing. And now, let me finish speaking, please. And you also, in your email this afternoon, said that you have to spoon-feed this board information. This isn't even the sum total of what you've given us. Do you consider that spoon-feeding? This board spends lots of time. I mean, we take our job seriously and we get paid nothing. And you're Mr. Eichner here. Can I ask you where he got his doctorate?
His organization is the one that created the documents for the...
I didn't ask you that question. I asked you where he got his doctorate.
I mean, what else do you want me to answer?
Well, he poo-poos, he poo-poos the other reports that we go by, and you can read the footnotes and they're all doctriled, like Ivan Valiella for one.
You're attacking me right now.
No, I'm...
You're attacking me for no reason.
No, I'm not. I am questioning...
I didn't go to any board, and if we go back to what you had said, from the very first meeting, let's put it right out there. From the very first meeting...
Your letter stated...
I could ascertain that there were conversations with the Buzzards Bay Coalition because I had a private negotiation with them. And Mr. Petucci said, hey, listen, didn't some organization want to purchase this property? Think of me. I'm an applicant coming in. We're spending thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And somebody says to you at the very first meeting, hey, listen, didn't somebody try to buy this property from you? And what's going on with that? Now, as far as I know from open meeting laws, that's supposed to go through the zoning board of appeals. I get access to that information so prepared for those kinds of questions. That didn't happen. I come to another meeting, I had a private meeting with Rathgen, whatever her first, from Science Squares, because I do my homework.
So do we.
And you read the letter and it didn't go through the zoning board.
No, I didn't read the letter.
You...
Did not read the letter.
I did not read the letter, sir. I took what I knew and I added what you said. And let's get back to your first letter that you read.
Let me finish what I gotta say.
No, no.
Let me finish what I gotta say.
Hey, 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 hey.
It's not fair to me to get cut off.
Let's be civil, please.
It's not fair to me to get cut off. All we have to do is go back to the video, because I've done it. And you'll see that he said, doesn't that letter have another paragraph to it? It's on the tape. So, but my point is, I don't want to argue that point. The point that I want to say is that when you come in front of a board and board members seem to be doing or not seem to, having conversations, and they're allowed to do research, but the research is going to be out there for the public domain. And I haven't been treated fairly like that.
Madam Chair, I want to point a clarification here. The board members are doing what? Having conversations? How are they having conversations? Are you saying outside of...
The very first meeting, you asked me...
So within the meeting?
You asked me within the meeting. You asked me if an organization tried to buy the property or made an offer for the property.
Okay.
And I came to the meeting and I heard that. And in fact, that had happened in a private conversation between myself and Buzzards Bay Coalition. That information, the way I understand the open meeting laws, is that that's supposed to go through, just like my information is supposed to go through the zoning board of appeals, so is in that.
Madam Chair, may I just interject it because I don't like where he's going with this one bit. And I'm going to look for that video. I don't remember saying that. And anything that I might have said did come through the zoning office because who am I going to talk to about that?
They weren't party to the conversation.
I'll tell you what. We'll take a look at that.
Accusation.
And that's not, that type of accusation isn't going to stand.
I can tell you that I did call Noreen about it and asked Noreen about it. Right after, the next day.
And nobody told me about it.
The very next day, called Noreen.
Let's move to a point of privilege, Madam Chairman.
Excuse me?
I raise a point of privilege, Madam Chairman. We're getting off of base a little bit.
Yes.
If there's an open meeting violation, the applicant is represented by an attorney. He can file a complaint. That's the appropriate thing, not to start slinging mud back and forth. I would suggest that the applicant back on point, make his presentation, because we're well over, we normally give for an applicant to make a presentation. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I made a simple statement. I asked the applicant a question and he's been deflecting from the beginning. The letter you read from Eichner, who is not, does not have a doctorate, and the reports that we've gotten from the Buzzards Bay Coalition are filled with people with doctorates. I put a little more stock in that. Your expert said that at this point in time, that is not a nitrogen-sensitive area. He did not say that it will not be a nitrogen-sensitive area in the future. And I don't think that he can say that.
He's not my expert. He's a town's expert.
He's, you paying him for this?
He's a town...
Did you pay him for this?
What I want to do is...
He's your expert. Okay, I'm speaking.
I would like to accomplish something, so I'd like to have, I'd like to have...
Well, and I just want to continue on my point that I tried to start.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Ask. Scott McGann did not absolutely say that this would not be a nitrogen-sensitive area either.
Do you have his letter?
He said that it is not at this point in time within that. The people that I have spoken through have put the likelihood that this is going to be ruled a nitrogen-sensitive area anywhere from 30 to 50%. 30 to 50% is enough for us to be concerned...
What does this say?
I'm speaking, sir. 30 to 50% is enough for us to have a genuine concern about the future and the people that own these affordable units and who's going to have to pay for a crane for an obviously heavy unit that has to go in there. That's it, period. And this all could be solved if it was less dense.
Let me say this, Joe. It's tough to answer the innuendo and all the questions and accusations.
Don't innuendo. You can look at the tapes.
It's very difficult for me to answer things that happen in the future. The way science works, science always changes. I mean, at one point, there was probably a big glacier sitting here where we're standing right now.
May I ask a question?
It's not my job to be a soothsayer and look into the future and resolve all the issues up front. And that's what I feel the board's asking me to do.
Mr. Pena, would you be willing to put in an IA system on the four affordable units? That's the compromise I'd be looking for. I think that would probably put this issue to bed.
I don't think that's a compromise that this board is looking for. I think that you might be looking for. I believe that. I believe that the compromise, that the issue, there's a whole host of issues that are being fired at us tonight. There's a whole host of issues. And every single one of those issues, we have met the regulation or the guideline. Mr. Duffy talked about the pitch of the road. We meet the guideline. Well, suppose this happens? I don't know. I mean, these things are, you know, when you look at science and you study these things, every single thing that we're talking about here tonight, these aren't theoretical. These are all conjections. And I can't answer conjections. I can't answer things for you that are going to happen in the future down the road sometime. I've looked at other approvals. I looked at the approval, one of them just approved. He's actually a nitrogen-sensitive area. Didn't Mandate, he put any...
The reason I ask, if you'd be willing to do that, sir, to your point, to your own exhibit, which is the town's geo boundaries, the bottom right there, suggested IA districts. We don't know if that's going to be the final geo map. That's why I'm asking the question. The board is concerned about the cost of having to, of an affordable unit having to put one of these in if this map suddenly changes after construction.
Let me say this, sir.
The compromise I was just proposing, you put those in, I'm not concerned about the affordable units, excuse me, the market rate units, as I am.
I can appreciate what you're saying, and I really do. I would say this, Joe, regarding affordable units. People are purchasing units that are worth $700,000, $800,000 for $220 bucks, $220,000. It's not the government's job to make sure that in 40 years from now or 20 years from now, that we babysat them in a way that they can afford...
Holy cow.
I mean, no, it's not a holy cow.
Holy cow.
They have...
Five years.
People, 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 take, these houses, within 20 years, you're going to need to put a new roof on. Just going to, in the, I've been an appraiser for time in my life, okay? Studied it. In appraising, they say that a house is going to, economic life, a single-family wood frame house has an economic life of 75 years. In other words, if you do nothing to it with no maintenance, in 75 years, it'll be flat right on the ground. That, you know, no heat, no electricity, no air conditioning, 75 years, it's on every appraisal. They look at the appraisal and say, what's the status of that right now? So should, if a person, and all due respect to people who are, who are, these people are folks who have, it's hard information to hear, but it's the truth. The truth of the matter is, they have to maintain these properties. That's a fact. If they need a roof, now there's programs out there, and there's a lot of programs out there for the IA systems, there really are. But how can, it happened in the meeting prior to this. How is this board supposed to mandate people that the Housing Trust is going to put in a house today, what happens if a storm comes along and all the windows break? What happens if the roof gets blown off?
We're getting off track here.
You know, how do we answer that question? I'd like to have my engineer, go ahead.
Give me just one, and Noreen, as a department head, and in your department head meetings, is what Scott McGann potentially is requesting that all new housing, not new developments, but all new housing potentially would have an IA system? That's what the discussion is today. Is that correct?
So we did have a department head meeting today. Scott McGann did report that there are rapid changes occurring within the Board of Health and that larger developments, subdivisions, for example, will be the first ones that will be likely to have to install IAs. And it may even be the case that if you allowed all regular Title V's today, that as of the time a building permit was pulled, they may have to install IAs. So the information that he gave us when he last appeared before the board, things are changing very rapidly.
Well, can we look at Scott McGann's letter that he referred? Because in that letter, it says this watershed is not a nitrogen-sensitive watershed.
At this time.
But as of today...
Do you want me to read what he said? Sorry? Yeah, read it.
All right. Haring Brook might be declared, might be declared, a nitrogen-sensitive area in the future. But even, and this goes to your favor, but even if that occurs, this property may not, not shall not, but may not be incorporated into the area since it does sit south of Haring Brook. Nothing about his statement is definitive. It's maybe.
We read the letter. That's, do you have the application I gave you? That's not the letter.
No, this is an email, a recent email. It's what I have right now.
Scott McGann, Scott McGan, Scott McGann submitted a letter that said, this is not, this property is not a nitrogen-sensitive area, and he would only be requiring Title V systems. That's his words.
At this point.
At this point. Well, let me ask, I know you want to hear this kind of question, but why did Acrobesque Gardens not get required to put a... to put a.
Because there's sewers coming in five years.
Five years. Well, I guess, I think I should be, I think, I think.
No sewer coming in North Falmouth for 50 years.
Well, right now, we're not in a nitrogen-sensitive area.
Right now, but we're, our concern, sir.
What does the number say? That document came off the town website. That's the town's documents.
Maybe the best solution is to just say.
Let's have his engineer come up.
What's the engineer going to say?
I don't know.
Come on up. Come on.
I just watched the water quality meeting last night, and it just changed yesterday.
But we can handle this with condition.
And I, I want to point something else out from this letter. If you read this, this letter from Mr. Eichner, it says that it's not a sensitive, basically it says it's not a sensitive area because they allow beds 14 and 15. That's it. They wanted to put more beds there, and they will not allow it. That's why we're exploring an ocean outfall pipe. So, it's not as it's presented. And as again, this man does not possess a doctorate, and the documents that they poo-poo from the Buzzards Bay Coalition, if you read all the footnotes, it's nothing but people with doctorates. I'm sorry, I have to give a little more weight to their information. And further, I stated before that I've checked out this. I mean, my concern is only for the affordable units, just as Mr. Morse is. And people that in the know are putting the likelihood at 30 to 50 percent that it's going to be declared a nitrogen-sensitive area. And where are the affordable people going to be when that happens? Especially when we're going to need a crane? I mean, these people will be lucky if they can afford the roof on the house, let alone a crane in their backyard. I mean, this is something that's got to be dealt with, and if we reduce the density, this problem could be eliminated.
Or the four affordable housings get the D-9 now, right?
Right. With Jim.
Or we just condition it. We can condition it. Just put it, put it in.
Just condition it. He's not going to move on this side.
It's a good idea.
This is.
It's nuts.
Consider voting. We can't continue it.
We can ask.
We can ask, and if he says no, we'll just ask for a draft decision with conditions, and we can stick it, stick it through. Stick it, put it in.
I'm with you, Frank. Okay?
You know, I want to say that, you know, that the, the folks in town, the deal with the affordability, like to see them dispersed around the development so that they're not bunched together. Now, I don't know that this would happen, but under Rich's scenario, there's no problem moving an affordable unit to a lot that doesn't have a septic system behind it. Is that what you're proposing, Rich?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so in other words, and maybe it can, maybe it'll be close to what they're talking, what you're talking about, but, but there's a, there's a chance that the, that this problem could go away if we reposition the affordable units.
We can make a condition that all affordable units will be connected to a shared septic system.
Is that what you're suggesting?
That would cluster them.
You can't cluster them.
You can't cluster.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That would cluster, and you can't cluster.
You have to be separated.
They have to be.
They got to share, they got to share leaching field.
Could I just interject? This is, I'm Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers, and just to answer that or interject a little bit on the issue that Robert just brought up, and we suggested that we relocate the affordable units so that they won't have a tank and leaching system in the back of their houses. So, I think the condition to that effect would be more, give us more flexibility on where the affordables are located. Instead of them all being tied to the shared systems, some of them might have their own systems, but they would have the tank in the front yard or in affordable, the lots would all have the systems in there, either in the front yard or be in the shared system. So that this issue of the expense of a crane being able to get a heavy tank in the backyard would be not impinging on the affordable units.
You'd have, you'd still have to invest in a denitrification potentially, regardless if it's in the front or the back.
Yes, but let's, just as an example, if we, here, this one's designated as, right now, as an affordable unit with the future advanced technology system in the back. We just basically take this A, put it over here instead. So, this is a market rate unit, this is an affordable unit. This is the advanced technology system for that property. It's right here in the front yard. They can easily install it with conventional means.
You have to keep in mind that clustering is not allowed, so you'd have to spread these.
Yes, yeah, we'll, I mean, obviously, we have five affordable lots out here. Lot five is one, lot nine is another one, lot 16, lot 19. So, we would basically, you know, we can almost do it right now by moving this over to here. That's basically in the same location. We can take this one and move it right next door to 17. Problem solved.
But now, with that existing layout, all the units around the circle, none of them would be affordable then.
Right.
Up on the hill.
Well, they were the problematic ones anyways.
But would that be considered clustering?
Yep.
No, not really. You have some latitude.
They get the ocean, the ocean from the top of the hill? Huh? That's.
The ledge is going to be gone.
I think if the board made a finding that the position was adjusted at the request of the board to address the issue of the D-9 system resulting in what could be construed clustering, I don't think the hack would be coming after us for a violation. I think that it's reasonable compromise.
I think there is a compromise, yeah.
I think the clustering was to prevent putting the.
Yes.
Affordable units in some.
Shoving in a far corner of the lot.
Far corner.
Making them look like.
If they're mixed in, even if there's only one house between them, I don't think that's a particular problem.
I agree.
Well.
Are there any other questions to the engineer while we have him up here?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tony.
I just want to get this on the record and agree, disagree. I'm looking to you to do that. The standard Title V septic system is, depending on what's sitting underground and where it is, is roughly between $15,000 and $25,000. Am I correct?
Yes, yep.
The Clean Two Nitro 2KS is roughly $33,000, so roughly $8,000 more than a standard. And for 20 units, and I only did the math for 20 units, that's an extra $120,000 over the 20 units. But the cost to retrofit with a Nitro 2KS after all is done, with just the standard system in, would then cost $15,000 to $25,000. This is what I got from Clean Two. So, wouldn't it make more sense on the affordables, because it costs less now, to put in the Nitro system just for those five units at this point in time? Because it costs a lot more to those folks living in those houses, and I know that Mr. Pena doesn't, not too worried about those folks. Wouldn't it make more sense to at least for those five affordable units, put the Nitro system in now, where it costs less money to do now than to retrofit in the future? And I got this information from Clean Two.
I mean, I don't know the numbers that you, you just, I don't, I don't know all the specifics of the numbers of the cost installing now or later, but all I know is that we've preserved, we've reserved an area for those to be installed, and those would be, if we relocate some of these affordable units over, those would be basically all right in the front yard. Pretty easy installation.
It's a hypothetical. We've agreed that the standard Title V is between $15,000 and $25,000. To do all of that at one time with the Nitro 2KS that the country you folks gave us, it would be $33,000 or about $8,000 more than a standard. And I don't know this for sure. This is what I got from them.
I, I don't either, so.
Let's just, let's assume that they're correct. But to retrofit after the fact, two years, three years down the road, instead of being $8,000, it was twice that cost. It seems to me to make a lot more sense to put the IA system in now, and I just want the board to consider that. That's all the reason why I bring it up. And one more thing. The average monthly bill for a IA system is $19 a month, or $228 a year roughly. Again, this, depending what website you go on, who you talk to, plus the annual operation and maintenance is anywhere between $618. And that's starting with year one, where you have to do a lot more inspection. Years two through four tends to go down a little bit. But in a previous application, they were actually putting aside money for the affordable units for that type of service. So, I'm only putting it out that it makes sense to do an IA system now, even if no one on the applicant's side believes that it, we're going to be in a nitrogen-sensitive area, which we are likely to be, we don't know. We don't have any definitive answers. It makes sense to do the whole thing now, at least with the affordable units, yes, move the units around so everything's in the front lot, and maybe put some money aside for the affordable units for years one through four. I'm just putting it out there for thought. No thoughts on that?
Again, I don't know the numbers. I, we haven't looked into what the cost is retrofitting or installing up front, so I can't really, honestly can't say anything with it.
He was coming up to give his thoughts.
Yeah, I'd say he's the engineer. He doesn't have authority to make those kinds of decisions about.
I didn't ask about the authority. I asked what he thought about the numbers. I mean, we can just condition it that way if the board chose to do that. We could just.
Well, I would say that, I would, I would say that a fair condition might be if the town of Falmouth and its sweeping authority puts out some bylaws and guidelines for the entire town, that they'd be applicable to this development, and I think that's where it should fall, that this shouldn't be singled out, and, because other developments have not been singled out. So, I think that, I think that to be treated fairly, equitably, I believe that we should be held to the same standard that the rest of the town is. All the information I get, and I've submitted copious letters, that says just the opposite. You believe something different. The letters I have reference town meeting and everybody else that believes that, that's why they put the wastewater treatment plan there. If you read just the letters that I submitted in the last two days, so what I would say is, is we're willing to, if the town, and Scott knows this, if the town says, hey, listen, boom, you know, this is what's going to happen townwide, I'd gamble that the town of Falmouth will not have these watersheds, this particular watershed with denitrification systems. You know, I know that one of the board members here speaks quite a bit about the Buzzards Bay Coalition letters, and if you look at their letters, never in their letter, except for one of them, do they talk, they sent in like six scientists, just put them in there, but they had no position in the letters. I could pull PhDs flying all the time. Ed Eichner, his group are the ones that the town of Falmouth hired. I've given you those letters. His work is, the way the Nitro, these watersheds were created was because his organization, five of them through CMAS, they were hired by the DEP to create the watersheds for the Cape and some towns off the Cape. I don't understand how that standard is different for this development and why. That's my question. Why, why is the standard different? Because it seems to be so different. But if the town comes up with something, and we've only got half the units built, and they say X, Y, and Z, then I guess that's what we'd have to do. But I think it's unfair for me to, to study all these other applications and to look at things, and I compare things, you know, quite often. And I see, the only thing I can, it distills down to me is, and I wonder, am I being held to a different standard?
One thing I didn't hear, I have to make a correction. I didn't hear anyone up here mention the Buzzards Bay Coalition tonight at all. Go ahead, Mark.
Mark.
First off.
Did you mention?
You just mentioned.
That's a fair question.
The great.
Did you mention Buzzards Bay Coalition?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
One person, sorry.
You just, you just mentioned the placement of the, of the wastewater treatment facility. That, that was completely misplaced. The entire infiltration system that they built out of aluminum pipe sits there because it didn't work, because they built that thing on top of clay, on top of a rock moraine, and it ran down and it polluted West Falmouth Harbor. So, so a lot of the things you present to us as facts are not facts, and as I say, if what you said was correct, we wouldn't be considering an outfall pipe, which we are, because they cannot put any more into those infiltration beds.
The town's grown. When I left, when I left here at 17 years old, we go to calls, we had, I think, 11,000 people living here. So, the town has grown, and that's really kind of been the problem. My uncle John is the DPW commissioner at that time, and he recommended I don't fill an outflow, and the town turned it down. So, well, now we're back at the same place to where he started. But the, the point is, but you're, so, but Mark, let me just say this.
You're incorrect.
You're asking me, give me this for one second. You've just mentioned in your conversation five or six things that are speculative.
No, they aren't.
You're telling me that I have to, because the town made a whole slew of mistakes is what you're saying.
You just praised their, said the genius of placing the plant there. And then another thing is, Brian Howes was in charge of the S-MS, not your Eichner guy. He might have worked for him. I knew Brian Howes. He's dead now.
Four different groups collaborated.
Brian Howes was, was in charge of the entire S-MS for the South Coast. That's a fact.
Let me say that there's, the town of Falmouth made decisions back in those days, and at that time, they, they basically decided to have the affluent go out through West Falmouth Harbor. That's what they decided. There was no reduction of nitrogen at all. They didn't, now the new technology is allowed for it, Falmouth's on top of that thing. But you've just presented me with four or five things that you think the town did wrong. Are you asking me to resolve those things? I don't think they're wrong, but are you asking me to resolve those? Are you asking me to be subject to some mistakes that you think the town made?
No, I'm correcting the.
Okay, let's get off, let's get off the subject of the long pond. Is there anybody from the public that needs to speak on this? Come on up, sir. We need you to name an address, please.
My name is Ralph Helgried, and my address is 850 West Falmouth Highway, and I've been taxpayer and citizen proudly of the town of Falmouth since 1974.
50 years.
Thank you. I couldn't be prouder of having had the opportunity to come down here with my bride 60-plus years ago. No, I shouldn't say that, 50 years ago, because we were living in the town of Middleborough, and I'm sure you all know that the conditions in a town like Middleborough are far different in terms of revenues and opportunities for families to enjoy the American dream, if you will, and that's what my wife and I have enjoyed. I get a little personal, because I think it's important, we've got to understand that we're all supposed to be family, okay? Even though, you know, the bureaucracy get into it, we all have a point of view. And my son played hockey with Eddie Montero over there, and we enjoyed things like Buddy Farrar and the Falmouth Hockey Team going into Borne 30 years ago and having that relationship end because they had a fight. Now, maybe we shouldn't enjoy that, but that's the fact of the matter. That's history, town of Falmouth. Beautiful stuff. We enjoyed going into Boston Garden when Dickie McAvoy, I don't know if that name rings a bell with any of you, he was the goalie after Eddie, and he went on to be the goalie when Harvard University won the national championship. So, we got, you know, we got to get back to our roots and come together and do the best thing for the town of Falmouth and enjoy the history that we've enjoyed, all of us. There's nothing more important than that, especially with, I'm not getting political with you, but, you know, times have changed, and we all have to stand up, and we have to come together and do the right thing for the town of Falmouth. All right? So, I get a little upset. I can't tell you how proud I am to have you people as a board representing me as a citizen, and I can't tell you how proud I am of your performance tonight, although I've got a couple of exceptions here. This is from the perspective of being a citizen. The gentleman in the corner, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you made a comment about Mr. Pena not being receptive to the needs of the inhabitants of the new developments five years from now. Am I wrong about that?
I don't understand what, I don't remember saying it, but maybe go a little bit further with that. What, what was I talking about? What did I say?
You were talking about one of the issues between yourself and Mr. Pena, and there's no question in my mind that you made an adverse comment about Mr. Pena's ability to be cognizant of the needs of the people that are going to buy those units five years from now. I'm saying that to you very specifically.
I believe that I, I want, now, Jim, may I?
Yes.
I believe I was in response to his, what appeared to be a lack of sensitivity to those folks, and all I was doing was reacting to what appeared. those folks, and all I was doing was reacting to what appeared to me to be a lack of sensitivity. If Mr. Pena is absolutely sensitive to their needs, then I would certainly apologize for any disparations I cast towards him.
I'm just saying to you, as a citizen, I've only been to one of these things in 40 years, and there's nobody in this town that's any more proud of this town than I am, anymore indebted to this town than what they have, for what they have done for my kids. And the way that happens is because you make it happen. You all make it happen, because you stand up and you do your thing, and we see that here tonight. But I really am disappointed in your remark, and I have to say that to you as a citizen.
I appreciate that.
And now the other thing I need to say about this gentleman over here, and I think you, you know, your performances have been incredible, just as Mr. Pena and his crew have been, okay? This is the United States of America, still. You made the comment about people with doctorates, you correct me if I'm wrong, please, having more credibility in effect in terms of the issues that are involved.
Yeah, in lieu of the fact that, that I can easily pick out parts of this letter that are incorrect and go too far and assume. I mean, it's my job.
Yeah.
And this is a 40B project, and it's, this whole 40PB is designed to make affordable housing for those who can't afford it. And it is our job to ensure that they not only get into those houses, but they stay in those houses, and they're not encumbered with some unreasonable cost down the road. There are no absolutes, just as the map he showed us could very well change. And it's also a well-known fact that the sewer plant was misplaced. It was an ill-conceived notion. It has caused numerous problems, West Falmouth Harbor, and it continues.
Let me get back to the point.
No, these are facts, and they're the points as well, and we have to defend all.
Okay. You know, I'm a street kid from Dorchester, Massachusetts. I've grown up, and you know how I feel about the town of Falmouth and the job you people do, okay? And I'm saying to you, just as I've challenged this gentleman here, that you're doing a dishonor to the town of Falmouth and our history and what we're supposed to be doing as citizens, you know, whether you're on the board, or whether you're just some kind of working slob out there or whatever, okay? Now, as it happens, you know, my daughter was one of the first kids in Falmouth, along with Dicky McAvoy at the time, I'm going back 30, 35 years. First two kids in, in Falmouth to ever get a scholarship to Harvard University, okay? That's pretty nice stuff. Now, what I'm telling you here is when you say that his information not based on doctorates versus your information based on credibility of the data and where it came from, I've done, gone head to head, I've got an associate's degree in business administration a long, long time ago. And I'm telling you, I can go hard, I can go head to head with my daughter, who is a PhD, she's a psychoanalyst, and she's the chairman of cultural studies at New York University, okay? So I'm saying you're out of line in terms of your premise.
I stand behind.
As a citizen to you as a board member.
I stand behind everything that I said, sir.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Pellegrini. We appreciate it.
And thank all of you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Can I make a brief comment?
Go ahead, Frank.
I don't think we're going to get anything productive going forward tonight. It seems to me, and it's just my personal opinion, that the only way this is going to get resolved is if we have a proposed decision before us with conditions and waivers, and we vote on each one of them as a board. Because I don't know how anybody's going to, on this board, nobody really knows what anybody else thinks. The only way we're going to get to this is to have something in front of us and vote on it. My thoughts.
We're up against the deadline tonight anyway. If we don't close, unless the applicant was going to give consent to a continuance, but I would suggest closing.
Even if we were to get a continuance, what would it prove? We just have another meeting just like this with nothing accomplished.
I just didn't know if they were going to change the plan. They indicated they were going to change some lots around, so.
We can tell them to change it.
Again, Vicky Mitchell, on behalf of the project, what I would be asking is if, what you're discussing is if you are asking for us to present, similar to what the attorney that came before you on the last project suggested, that she could give you a proposed, a set of proposed conditions that we would be, that would be acceptable to us, that we could start working from. Is that something that you would be looking at with the, with, I know you're looking at, we're talking about moving lots, that you'd need to see which lots we're moving in order to be able to move forward? Is that something that you would accept from us as a, as a submission? And how quickly could we get back before you? Because I know we are on this one up against the 180 days.
Madam Chair, would, to throw into the mix, would escrow account to pay for potential upgrades be as acceptable? And do they, can they be structured, interest-bearing? And if it never came to fruition, it would revert back to the applicant?
We could, we could, but that's a condition, and we vote on it.
I just want to, you know.
You can answer her question too, about the too many moving parts.
I just made the comment that I think this case has far too many moving parts. And the administrator may need to confer with the individual members to remember what they said. So I think, from an administrative point of view, we should draft the decision.
And how about at least them submitting the units they propose to be the affordability, the changes? That would certainly get us one step down the road.
They're going to submit something, though. That's the problem.
Well, I think, I think the question before the board would be, is the applicant willing to continue to come back with some modifications, or is the hearing closing tonight?
Right. If the hearing does close, we can.
If you can close a hearing, subject to the specific information being submitted within a specific time.
He had it half-done right here a minute ago.
Yeah.
I mean.
Just that, just that.
Just that part. Because that's the only thing that's, well, I'm not thrilled with the density, I can tell you that. And I mean, I'm, I can't tell you that I'm 100% going to vote for, but my, by far, my largest concern is the affordability. And that's our main job. That's the whole purpose of 40B. You know, it might not look pretty sometimes, but that's the job we have to do.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I would suggest that, given that we've extended the same courtesy to the previous applicant, if counsel wishes to submit proposed conditions or findings, they'd be allowed to do so.
Well, you know, Robert, period, we made a ton of changes since the last time I was here, last two times. There's been a lot of changes. We moved houses. That's, that's how, I moved them on purpose so that the setbacks between those homes were nine feet. We've made all kinds of changes. Unfortunately, Rich didn't get a chance to go through those. We've made landscape changes. We have made $25,000 worth of changes, moving houses, putting more, you call that not open space, but we wanted to eat at open space. We've made, we have, we've made all kinds of changes, and unfortunately, we didn't get to those changes because, you know, it seems like we're always stuck on this nitrogen thing. So I, if we could, I'd like them to, to go through the changes, but if you don't want to, I mean, you guys have had them for nine days. You've had them for nine days. Every single change we made, distance between the houses, equipment so we could put the leaching fields in, if they failed. More parking, we put very strong buffering on both, particularly on the, on the north side. The south side is so buffered, it's unbelievable. I mean, it's just heavily wooded. But we've made, we, I say we have made, we must have made 80 changes, and we haven't spoken to those. I know they're busy, sometimes you get a chance to look at them, but I hope that Rick had a chance, Richard, to go through those changes, so you can see the effort that we're putting in and the care that we have, okay? So I want to say to you that I was the first developer in this town to apply as a private person to do affordable housing in this town. I ended up making a, folks here were from the affordable housing folks, Frank knows this, I made a $225,000 donation to the units that are built off Route 151, okay? And so I was the first, I asked Norine why my name isn't on that list there. I was the first private developer. Frank Duffy was the town attorney at that time. Barbara Mett was a thing. We've worked our butt off in this development. We've worked even much harder in this thing. We don't leave here and not address the issues. I've tried to address every issue you've given me. You know, so if you haven't looked through the stuff, you'll see that when you do look through it. So I'm not sure what you're suggesting, but let's move forward, and if he can't get up here and speak, then I guess, what does this distill down to? Where are we at?
Today's our drop dead date.
So I think the question before the board is whether the applicant is willing to extend to come back and further discuss any changes, or whether they're not going to continue the hearing. So I think you need to figure that piece out first.
We have five minutes? Excuse me? May I have a moment to?
What are the ramifications of that? What are the ramifications of not extending?
Then we would have to close tonight.
Close.
Give us a few minutes.
Can I just ask a question?
You probably should wait till the applicant comes back.
They probably should wait till they come, so.
A procedural question you can ask Norine.
Yeah, it's just. Katie Taylor from Salt Pond area.
Speak into the microphone, buddy.
Katie Taylor from Salt Pond area, Spurts Sanctuaries. So those changes, are those up on the system, on the website now, the ones from nine days ago? So I can look at them on there. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, do you want to take a brief recess for FCTV, so that there's not downtime?
Yeah, but they're right out there, if you want.
Oh, I don't care.
I would wait till they come back in, if that's okay.
It's like in Dead Air.
It feels good, doesn't it?
The poor people at home will be disappointed.
Figure it out. It's because he's a bitch. That's why he did it. I was going to bring that up, but I thought, stay out of it. Good, good final score last night. I didn't watch it. Frank said he went to bed at 3:02, and I said, that's what it ended, Frank.
It ended 3:02.
Yep, three wins in a row. That's a big deal, so this year, so far.
I really don't know anything about this.
Subject to. Yeah, subject to what happens next week.
You're only as good as your last game.
Yeah, that's right. How many times did Billy Martin get fired?
Bruins fired so many coaches who won the Stanley Cup after they.
Afterwards, yeah.
I think we lead the league in that.
Yeah, well. Just in the last 15 years, I think there's three of them, right?
I saw this article about the records, the lifetime records of the. Two to one, men's overall.
Oh, yeah. Here's another. Thirsty. House of Eleven was a long time ago.
Time goes by fast, isn't it? It's amazing.
Yeah.
Should we clock them back in?
Yeah.
Clock them? I think it's been.
God, give them a little time, maybe.
It's a big decision. It's a big decision.
Two minutes out there might save us two days.
We got to add the house.
We have no problem with the board closing the hearing. We will submit a new map that will show the access for the affordable units and whatever conditions that we, if you're allowing us to submit conditions, and then we will, we'll see what your orders.
Okay, I move we close the hearing.
I'll second that.
Can we modify just to include specifically for the record that they're going to be submitting additional?
What are you going to submit?
For consideration.
So we're going to submit for consideration the new map?
All right, so, so the specific items, though, are moving the affordable designations and potentially any sort of septic with that? Is that the only change that you're asking for at this time?
At this time.
At this.
Right, right. Once you check, you close, that's.
Isn't that correct? Once, once you close, we don't have these types of.
No, for the discussion, right?
So we have a motion and a second, and it's amended to accept.
Yes.
Okay.
And we have proposed conditions.
We're going to submit proposed conditions and the new map.
And any additional information on.
And any, yes.
We get two weeks. How long do you want us on that?
Yes, when would you like those?
Two weeks.
And try to keep them as separate as you can.
Two weeks?
Just to stay within the framework.
Keep it as separate, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, they're not supposed to be clustered. I mean.
Oh, yes, the house, yes, I understand.
All the units.
Yeah, I mean, but, but all the ones up high on the hill with the best view, so it's, just so if you can spread them amongst the other area as evenly as you can.
We will do that.
That would be, that way there's no, I mean, you know what I'm talking about.
I don't think we have the choice today, because Mass Housing is going to look at that when they don't see why before, so we'll do the best we can.
Thank you for your consideration. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of closing? Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you.
So now you need a date to consider the decision.
Oh, boy.
And what's the drop dead date?
Before you did.
Yeah, so the hearing to review the draft would be on January 9.
All right.
Nine?
How much time do we have, January 9th to the 40th day?
A couple of days.
How did that work, Norine? I'm sorry. I want to be clear on this. What are you saying?
So they would be reviewing the draft decision on January 9.
Okay. And in two weeks, we'll submit what we, our proposed conditions. And then on January 9th, you'd be voting on a decision?
Yes.
Correct.
And what's, what's the other, you mentioned two more days.
Forty days from today.
No, just the filing deadline.
That means when they have to file the conditions.
The filing deadline for the decision. Your attorney can fill you in.
Okay, okay, fine. Now, do I have to, you want me to sign something for exactly?
No, because we're closing, so there's no extension.
Thank you.
Did we vote the date? Yes, no?
We'll vote to do the draft, I'll make a motion.
Continue to decept, January 9th.
Second.
All those in favor of the draft being done on January 9th? Aye. Opposed? None. All right, let's, let's do this. All right, minutes?
Oh, my God.
Oh, my Lord. So many of them. What did he say?
Review of the draft. I think the minutes of October 24 and November 7 have been circulated.
Can you guys go out in the hall and, please? Anyone want to make a move?
Anyone want to make a motion? I'll do it. Let's accept the minutes of October 24 and November 7.
Second.
Everybody all set on those?
Yep.
Right up? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. So any administrator updates?
I'm not going to trouble you, given the hour.
Thank you.
I will tell you, just briefly, though, that there was a department head meeting today. The Board of Health agent did report that these changes for IA systems are happening very rapidly.
Like really fast.
And, right. And that what he told you yesterday is going to change today is going to change tomorrow. And so the Board of Health is looking at the subdivisions as being the first targets for IAs. Next are going to be new houses, raise and rebuilds.
Yep.
Following that, additions. They may actually even look at dollar amount improvements. So any homes that are, you know, similar to what you're doing with flood planes now, flood zones. So by the time a building permit is pulled, the Board of Health could also change what they're going to require. So if that happens, between the time this decision is issued and they pull a building permit, they may have no choice but to install.
Right. That's correct.
Way it goes.
Regardless of the...
Regardless, whatever the Board of Health has ruled at the time is what they're going to be stuck with.
What else we got?
What else? What else? Is that it? Not that I'm cutting you off from AM.
No, it's enough.
Board discussion?
Not tonight.
We got through that. Board updates? We had last Thursday off. It was awesome. Future agenda items?
Deceptia December 12.
Next Thursday.
And our next meeting will be December 12th, at 6:00 PM. Mark?
Motion to adjourn in ten seconds.
We got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye opposed? There better not be anybody...